Do we have, we have Nick, Curie, Eching Sally. Okay, the whole gang's here. Welcome everyone to the November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three Winchester Planning Board Meeting. We have a quorum, so why don't we go around? Oh, if you, we are being recorded. Both via Wind Cam as well as over Zoom. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your. Excuse me, turn off your video and your audio. Why don't we do a roll call vote here? Carrie, Carrie.
Present.
Eching Scott.
Present.
Sally Dale.
Present.
Nick Rosados.
Present.
And I'm Dave Juries. I'm also present. We also have with us Taylor Herman, the Town Planner. And Nancy Polkary, our Recording Secretary. And earlier I thought I saw Brian Mantor. But I don't see him any longer.
Brian is here.
I'm here. Oh, yes, sir. Okay. Hi, Brian. Oh, there you are. Sorry. So we are running a bit late. That was my fault. My apologies. So we do have a, what I would suggest we do is to, why don't we do one approval of minutes? Or approve one of the minutes. I think that might take us up till seven thirty and then we can start the, the hearing or restart the hearing. Do you want to go to the first minutes, please? So these are the minutes for Tuesday, October seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Are there any? Amendments or corrections or questions?
I have, of course, I have edits on page one only.
Okay.
You want to? In, in page one, under the first paragraph, Updates. Um, I wanted it just to say at the very beginning, Town Planner, Taylor Herman, and he met.
Okay.
Name into that sentence. And then farther down, one, two, three, four, fifth line, there's a sentence that begins, he explained that if a. And I wanted it to say if a construction project. Contains six or more residential units. Um, I, I mean, maybe that's obvious. And if it's truly obvious to others, we can skip it. Um, and then the last sentence where it says, lastly, the request for a proposal process has started for an economic development consultant person. I would just insert the word development and consultant and presumably you could delete person. But um, that was my only edits on it. And I'm not sure if you feel it's necessary to insert the word construction. That's what I have.
Um, okay. Any other comments? Um, is there a motion to approve the minutes of October seventeenth, twenty twenty three as amended?
Uh, I make that motion.
Is there a second, please?
A second.
Great. Roll call vote. Carrie. Oh, great. Did I freeze?
No.
No.
Carrie.
She froze.
Carrie froze. Okay, Eching.
I.
Uh, Nick.
I.
Sally.
I.
And I say I as well. So it's four, zero, one frozen. Why don't we, shoot, now I think I've lost my.
Are you there, Taylor?
Hi.
I don't know when it dropped.
Do you have, did you want to do the minutes for October twenty fourth, or do you think we don't have time? I have two tiny edits. We hear you now.
Taylor, can you move it to the October twenty fourth?
Yeah, but are you able to speak and hear?
Um, I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Okay, sorry about that.
I have one edit on the minutes of October twenty fourth at the bottom of page two, the very last bullet where it says, Mr. Taylor. His last name is Herman. Mr. Herman. And. That's what I had for edits.
Okay. Are there any other edits or concerns with this? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes as amended for October twenty fourth, twenty twenty three?
So moved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Uh, great. Roll call vote, Nick.
I.
Uh, Carrie. Carrie seems so frozen again. Sally.
I.
Um, Eching.
I.
Uh, Carrie, are you back yet? Nope. Okay, so we got four, zero, and one frozen. Um, this is just an evening for. Technology male functions. So. Uh, why don't we now skip on to the, our next agenda item? Uh, which is to continue our public hearing on the Waterfield CBD. Special Permit Number Eighteen. That's the Civico Concourse Development. Can I get a motion to open the hearing, please?
So moved.
And can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, so let's just do a roll call. Sally.
I.
Nick.
I.
Uh, Eching.
I.
Carrie, are you back yet?
I, I'm sorry, it keeps dropping.
Yeah, um, and I say as well. Okay, thank you, everyone. We are now. Hearing is reopened. So the, just a very short, well, Taylor, you know more about this than I do. Do you want to just give a really short intro as to where? We are now, where, vis a vis where we thought we'd be?
Yep. So we have our, our developers here tonight for Waterfield CBD. Number nineteen. We have updated designs, which have been, originally were requested by. By FIRE. Those have now been seen by the Select Board and will be shown, I believe will be shown tonight. Um, we also have an update on the, on the peer, on the peer reviews from, from Tool. Uh, that's the traffic analysis. Um, the peer review from Weston Sampson will not be presented tonight. The updated designs mean that we will need to go back in and, and revisit those. We'll also have questions tonight from the developers about how we're going to proceed to design review with Dennis Carlon. Uh, that will be a question that we need to answer before we close tonight.
Hey, uh, thank you. I had one quick question. Has this, has FIRE seen these?
Yes.
Okay, and they're okay with it?
They've approved.
Okay, excellent. So, um. At this point, um. Who is the lead person for Civico Concourse, Concourse? Am I getting that right?
Causeway.
Causeway. Because who's going to be the lead presenter this evening?
That will be Sam. Yeah, I can give a introduction.
Yeah.
To our team. So my name is Sam. Thank you. My name is Sam Scopitone with Civico Development. Um, and I'll just reintroduce our team that's here tonight. We have, from, from the development team, we have Civic, we have Civico Partner Taylor Bearden. Uh, and we also have Dave Trigorth with Causeway here. And from our design team presenting will be Joe Haskett from Union Studio. And we also have. Um. Sorry, Mike Santos from VHB. And if there are questions on civil, we have Michael Laham from Horstley Witten. Um, as Taylor mentioned, last time we were here, we left off. With the traffic and civil peer review presentations from the towns consultants. Uh, and as a result of input we received from the fire department. And also some butter comments, we decided it was necessary to make some design changes. Uh, which we will walk you through here tonight. Um, we think that the. The changes are fairly minor in terms of the impact on the vision for the site. And I just wanted to note that. We went before the Select Board last Monday and these changes were pre-approved. In terms of compliance with the land development agreement we have with the town. Um, so I think. Joe is going to share his screen and we will walk you through some slides.
Can everyone see that?
Yep.
Go ahead, Sam.
Um, yeah, so if you just, I'll just go through the intro slide. Thanks, Joe. Um. So. This is just an overview of. Uh, of how the design has changed. We added a fire truck turnaround in the rear of the site. Which you'll see in a minute. And as a result of that change, we lost three units in the building. Um. We also had to widen the alley between our building and the butter. Uh, so that we could accommodate the fire truck in that, in that alley. Um. We, we couldn't do that with the width that was existing in the, in the original design. So we had to. Push the front building back a little ways from Waterfield Road. And as a result of that change, the front portion of the building got smaller and we lost an additional two units. Um, in order to offset some of those unit losses, we decided. To propose raising the front part of the building to four stories and eliminating the, the former roof deck. Um, so overall, we have a net loss of four units and a total of fifty six units. Uh, whereas before we had sixty units proposed. Uh, and we have also, as a result of the lost residential units, we have lost three resident parking spaces. Um, uh, that was also a result of, um. Some of the space constraints. From the fire truck turnaround. Um, some incidental, so, some additional benefits of this redesign are that we have. Removed parking encroachments from the adjacent MBTA property. And we have, uh, in pushing the front building back, we have opened up the alley. Um, so that it no, the building no longer blocks the butter's window. Um, so that's the summary and I'll let Joe take it from here to walk you through the design changes on the plans.
Thank you, Sam. Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, my name is Joe Haskett. I'm a principal at Union Architects located in Providence, Rhode Island. Uh, thank you for taking the time to let us, uh, come before you this evening to share our. Um, design changes based upon the feedback that we received from. Uh, the fire officials in the town of Winchester. Uh, just to give you a rundown of what you'll see, we've placed the slides side by side. Um, so you can see that we have on the left, we have the original scheme that, that you've seen before. Uh, and then we have the revised scheme that we're proposing, uh, this evening with highlights. Uh, hopefully we can, uh, which will help. Uh, facilitate an easier understanding of, of how we've revised the scheme. Uh, so the first one indicates, uh, on the original was, uh, the ground floor plan, the site plan. And on the right, the orange areas highlight the specific areas that have really demonstrated, demonstrably changed in the project. So if you look furthest to the right on the right slide, you'll see what Sam had mentioned. Uh, that's, uh, Waterfield Street. Uh, that is the area where, and I'll use my cursor and let me know if, if you cannot see my cursor. Uh, but the hand starts to show this is, this is Waterfield Street. Uh, this is the front building, uh, similar to what we had over here. And Sam had mentioned the building got pushed back. That was because of the requirement for our hose length. Uh, in, in consultation with the fire officials, uh, from the town of Winchester. This had to be twenty feet wide so that a truck could pull in here and then we could satisfy the requirement for the hose length. Uh, all the way to the back of the building. So what that did was, um, allowed us to push the building back. It gave us a little bit of a forecourt opportunity here. Uh, and then moving further back, the fire truck had to come in. And have a turnaround here. This is kind of a revised hammerhead scheme where the, the fire truck come in. Pull here, back into this area and then pull back out. Uh, what, what this also did was allowed us to reconfigure the stair in the trash room, which was pushed further back. Uh, which I think is actually a positive for this particular site, allowing us to locate the trash here. Uh, furthermore. Um, making accessibility and turnaround for the fire truck, or I'm sorry, for the trash truck, much easier since we have this turnaround. Excuse me. Uh, also, as Sam mentioned, highlighted on the left slide, our yellow areas where we had, uh, were currently. Parking resides on MBTA land. Since we were going through this, uh, in consultation with ownership. Uh, they thought it would be best if we could just stay off of that. Uh, and kind of for lack of a better term, keep a cleaner site. Uh, so as you'll see, uh, all of the parking has been moved off of the property. Of the MBTA land. Uh, moving on, uh, concentrating on the front building, as I mentioned before, with the width here, this gets pushed back. Uh, allows access for the fire truck here. And this particular building went from three stories. Uh, to four stories to match the height of the building behind it, which you'll see here. And we thought it might help just to given, uh, a rendering of what we had proposed before. This is the four building, uh, directly on Waterfield Street with, uh, with an, an entrance, uh, off of the corner. Close to the, uh, adjacent parking lot with the MBTA there further to the left. This is our proposed revised scheme. What it does is provides a forecourt. Centers the, uh, entry on the building, which I think is a benefit, uh, and then raises the height. Up to four stories to match the building beyond. Couple of more things, uh, to go through, uh, the different levels of the plan. At the lower level, as you'll see here. There was, uh, an indent put into the foundation. That was for our, uh, fire truck turnaround. That was the, in, this was the original here where we had the stair here. We simply rotated it and provided access for the fire truck here. That was, that was the only adjustment to, uh, the lower level. Uh, lower level parking, uh, remains the same. There's no level, no loss of parking spaces. Uh, within the lower level, we, we were able to kind of with this reconfiguration, we're able to reconfigure a few spaces. Excuse me, to keep the count, uh, the same. On the first floor plan, uh, the revisions here, as I mentioned before, was with the alley width, we now have a forecourt. The building got pushed back. Um, and we now are allow, allow space for the fire truck to be turned around. Lobby centered, uh, and the trash room moved further back. Uh, first floor planned parking. So this is the ground level with access to the MBTA, which is planned south. Uh, the orange area showed the areas where we had parking before. The red areas demonstrate where we lost the parking. And this is where Sam had mentioned that we had a loss of three spaces at this particular level. Moving on to, uh, the second floor, this is where we have the terrace level. Uh, double loaded corridor still remains the same. The community room stays the same with access to the terrace. The one thing that this allowed us to do is in, instead of having to go through the building over to the slide on the left of what we had originally. To come into this area for, for our second means of egress through the terrace. We now have direct access from this to the stair, actually making this plan. Uh, I would say a preferred scheme in terms of security access and life safety. Moving on to the upper level, the fourth floor plan, we had an exterior space up here for a roof deck. Uh, based upon the amount of space that we have for our terrace, uh, on the second level. And due to the loss of, of the, uh, of units that we had, uh, we're proposing with this pushback. Um, to regrab this space, go to a fourth story and add our unit. Uh, add another unit here to keep our, our, um, our height of our building commensurate with the, the, the front building with the rear building. Uh. And then just to give you an idea of the unit count comparison. Um, overall, uh, the totals. Uh, in the affordable side remain the same. There was just a kind of reconfiguration or readjustment of the unit types. Um, don't need to go through all of these, but just to kind of show you that those shifted a bit, but the total remains the same. And then, uh, lastly, on parking count, the comparison is Sam mentioned, we had, uh, three spaces lost from the residuals, residential portion of the, of the project. Not from the, uh, publicly accessible parking area in the parking lot. Again, uh, similar to the units, uh, we did, uh, lose net three spaces. Uh, but some of the, um, kind of the, uh, exterior and interior and compact percentages were adjusted here. But again, a net loss of only three spaces, uh, to satisfy the life safety requirements for the, um, fire truck access and turnaround. Um, so I'll turn it back over to, uh, to Sam and let him, um, talk about the, the financial impact to the town.
Thanks, Joe. Um, we just wanted to quickly mention, uh, and that we, we provided this update to the Select Board last week. Um, we expect that there will be a minimal financial impact, uh, to the town from this change. Uh, this is because the allowable rents have increased in the past year, which helps offset the, uh, the loss of a few units. Um, so the resulting cash flow and tax revenue, uh, we expect will be similar to before. Uh, and there's no change in the purchase price to the town. Next slide. Um, so just to wrap up here. As I mentioned, the Select Board approved these plans last week, uh, for compliance with the land disposition agreement. Um. We have the traffic. Uh, we have, we'll be discussing responses to the tool. Uh, traffic comments this evening, uh, and the, the engineering peer review is still ongoing. The design peer review has not yet begun. And pending the board's feedback tonight, um, we were interested in getting that started if possible. Um. And then just looking forward, we, you know, we're hoping to file for, uh, we're, we're hoping to. Put in our application to the state for. Uh, for subsidized financing for this project in February. Um, if all goes well, we would get a funding award in the spring. And then proceed with, uh, further design development and. Financing, uh, and hopefully resulting in construction in spring of twenty twenty five. Uh, and with that, I think that's the end. Of our update. Um. I'll put it back to the board. Would you like to do, uh, questions and comments at this point? And then we can get into the traffic peer review.
I had some questions about the top floor, front new unit in the very front of the building. Half of the ceiling, no, half of the roof of the third floor is still, I think it's drawing one oh four. Yeah. Um. You, you almost had it. Go, go back to one oh four there. So you see how you have a pink rectangle, suppose, no, pink, whatever color it is. Orange as opposed to orange square on the left. Is that publicly accessible space or is that accessible as a roof deck to that unit?
I think it's a good question. I think the, um, um, what we're showing there and demonstrating is. The orange basically just shows the delta, the change. So the orange here shows what we had as a roof deck and that was private. Um, that was not public, public, publicly accessible. Um, and this just shows. What the footprint of the original scheme was, but this is now pulled back. Uh, so it basically shows that this is the front face of the building. Whereas the front face of the building was here, much closer to Waterfield.
I see. Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. It does. Um, and when you say publicly accessible, which it's no longer the case, do you mean? To the Winchester public or to the residents of the building?
This, what we had proposed originally would only be accessible to the residents of the building.
Right. That's what I thought. And now there isn't anything there. Okay.
Yep.
Well, well, now, now that, that pink or the orange try, uh, the rectangle on the right. Will now be the publicly accessible plaza in front of the building.
Yes.
Between the sidewalk and the front.
Right.
That's great. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm seeing, I thought I had another question about one of these drawings here.
One, one, Sally, can we?
Yeah, go ahead.
Let's just do around Robin. Does anyone else want to jump in here? And does anyone have a comment or question?
Yeah.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I think that the, um. Recession of the front building, um, allowing the, the front portal, the front landscape is, is a nice thing. Uh, I, I think that the fourth. Building doesn't seem to, um, detract. Um, and it, it doesn't seem, I, I, and my question here is how. Tall that fourth building is and is that part of the waiver of height that you are asking for? Um, does that height? I know there is a, there's a height waiver that this permit is asking for. And is, does that fourth building encroach upon that?
This particular height does not, where we encroached was in the connector building and on the tower beyond.
Okay. Um, and then another question was, what was the unit to parking space ratio and before? And then what is it now?
It's a good question. Uh, our unit count. Is now, we have a hundred and sixteen spaces for the whole project now. And then our total, uh, unit count. You know, you caught me off guard here. The total unit count was sixty and we lost. We lost three, so we are now fifty seven.
Right. Uh, you are fifty six units, right? And how many parking spots are there for residents?
Uh. You know what? I can figure that out. I don't have it right at my fingertips. We had a hundred and sixteen. And then, Sam, do you remember the particular amount that we had dedicated for the publicly accessible? Uh, spaces that did not change.
I believe it was forty eight, eight spaces.
You have it on a different slide.
Yeah. Can you go back to the parking summary slide? Yeah. Can you go back to the parking summary slide?
There.
It doesn't say it was public and what is?
It, it was, it was.
Outdoor spaces public?
So before it was seventy one public, publicly accessible spaces and I think forty eight. Resident spaces. So now we're down to forty five resident spaces.
So you were always um within the point seven five parking.
Yes.
Minimum and exceeded it and it's, it's still exceeds it now.
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Um, and then with the redesign of the ground floor, um, I was. I, I understand that parking is one of the biggest issues of, of Waterfield here. Um, but I was a little disappointed to see that um, this project is to wean us. And it's a very hard, hard project to wean us off of car dependency and the, the bike issue, right? The bike parking is still remains in the basement. And I, I know that, you know, the cars have a very, very hard. Um, dimensional requirement to them. And there's, there's very few leftover spaces to, to house the bikes. But I, I, I find it a little disappointing that there's not um bike parking uh still remaining on the first floor. And as, as such an important aspect of this transit oriented um. Project, I just, I just find that hard. And I, I can see that, you know, the rectangles are so important and we need, we need every single right angle. But just to have something where you don't have to walk your bike down the stairs or, or all the way down the ramp seems very essential here.
You know, I think if I could add, that's, that's a, you know, very good comment and one that, you know, I would concur with. I would, I would add that, um, you're right, we did, we did have covered uh bicycle parking over here. Uh, but in order to kind of, it's, it's a tight site. And I do, I, I, I agree with your comment. I think what we did do is we provided covered bicycle um access over here. Uh, and one of the things I think that, one of the comments, the tool that we would get into is. Uh, I thought it was a good comment to provide, you know, some potential um EV ready. You know, slots for potential e-bikes or something like that. So we have covered uh bicycle parking provided back here. Enough for eighteen bikes.
Oh.
Which is.
I didn't realize that. That's great.
Which was enough to kind of meet. I mean, there's, there's the spirit of the zoning ordinance, which, which we meet at the, even at the, at the ground level. But we do show um more at the lower level if residents do so choose. Uh, but we do provide some here since this was, you know, providing the hammerhead, we did lose some spaces. But it did open up a few things that we were kind of deficient in. I think access for the fire or for the garbage truck to come in, be able to turn around. We now have covered parking for some bicycles here. I think that's actually been uh a benefit to the project.
Awesome. I, I just, thank you for pointing that out. I didn't, I didn't see that.
And is it clear that, that bicycle storage that's right at grade here, is that clear that it's for residents or for um the general public? To use, anybody?
I think it would be, it would be covered, so it wouldn't be, you know, you'd be able to lock your bike to a um. You know, to a um. A lockable kind of, um, there, there's a, there's a prefabricated unit, so it's open, so it wouldn't be closed, so people can see that they can put their bike there.
That's okay.
But you're, there, it's, you couldn't, this way you're not preventing non-residents from using it.
Correct. Anybody could use it. Anybody would have access to it.
Are the exterior spaces available to residents after a certain hour? They always public? And are we expecting that the lots clear overnight?
I would let, uh, I would let ownership weigh in on that one.
I think we, we have not yet established a detailed parking management plan yet, but the expectation is that. This, there would be. I, I think it would be. Probably open twenty four hours. Um, and there would probably be some price controls uh that. You know, uh, uh, there, there could be some. Depending on how long people wanted to stay, they would pay more. Um, but I don't think, I don't think we have any plans to have it closed at night at this time.
Okay.
Right, that's, that's a question that I have about the parking. And I know that you said it's not done yet, um, but. I, I guess, um, I, I am interested to know, for instance, in Arlington. When you, when you go and park at certain lots, you park the car and then you go to a kiosk and you get a ticket and you put it in your car. On the dashboard. And I'm wondering, uh. What's going to be the plan? And again, I, I know you mentioned it's not, it's not complete yet, but that's something that I'm interested in. I want to know what's going to be the plan for the parking. Um, and you know, how, how the public spaces will be controlled. Um, and also. Um, if the retail stores will get some kind of a. Like short-term parking, so that people can run in and get a coffee or do a quick errand and then come out. Um, maybe there would be a. Uh, a stamp or a parking pass from retail establishments. Um, but that, those are questions that I, that I'm looking forward to having the answers to.
So this is. Yeah, I can give a little bit of context here, Sam. This is Dave Trigorth. Um. We have a couple of uh parking facilities that we manage under our residential buildings. Um, and we have a professional parking management company that we work with. Uh, that helps us figure out the best technology and systems to use. Um, they're kind of evolving uh over the past ten years. They've evolved quite a lot. Um, and by the time we actually build and are occupying this, I imagine they'll evolve again with smartphones and everything else. That we've got. Um, and so we'll work with them closely to figure, figure exactly out what the plan is. But it'll definitely involve. Um, you know, just sort of the, the more recent technology that makes it easier. That, you know, this will be a public lot, that the residents will, you know, have their own parking downstairs. It will be a public lot. We are going to, um, and we've committed with the select board to work with. Sort of the neighboring retail to figure out, and we've already actually worked with them to locate a door um out of the public parking. Uh, to, uh, it was actually right there. Go, go back. Um, so we've met, I've met with Ron a couple of times, um, to sort of figure out the placement of that door. Uh, to get back into the retail area. We've worked with Ron as well to get the sidewalk and the stairs connected back up. As well on all the grading, right? Um, so absolutely the parking will have some element that will support the retail from the perspective of turnover. And not just having people come, park their car for twenty four hours while they get on the train or they, you know, do something else. And never leave, right? Uh, which is, which is a concern for all of us, obviously. Um, both within the building and outside as well. Um, so, um.
Is that going to be something that, you know, when it's, when you guys uh are, are, and are doing it? Will that be something that'll be documented? Will there be like a, a, an agreement that defines how that's all going to work? And that, that's part of the whole thing?
So, um, we are.
Kind of a right, you know.
Yeah, per the land disposition agreement, we're, we're responsible for managing and sort of controlling this parking. Um, certainly we want the input of the town and that's, I, I, you know, in terms of just what. What works and what doesn't work in coordination. Um, but ultimately, we're the ones responsible. And ultimately as well. The town, as a result of the LDA, has a lot of visibility into the operation of the entire building. Um, for, you know, everybody probably remembers, you know, the regular reporting. Um, as part of the ground lease agreement, that's going to be, that's going to be part of this.
Is there any thoughts on timing for, for when, at, at, at what stage of the timeline does this, this stuff all start to gel and, and come together?
Um. I think from, just in terms of exactly how we operate it. Um, of what we charge for what particular. You know, space or what particular time, it's going to be later um in the process. Probably closer to when we start construction, um, because things will obviously be changing. Um, you know, just in terms of just exactly where. You know, this particular space is or that particular space from the perspective of, um. You know, as we finalize the design. Um, so, that's. You know, it's going to be after permitting.
Yeah, I should, I, I want to just chime in just uh quickly is that? All of the parking that's going to be the public parking, that's really part of the land disposition agreement. And so that's really the select board, which is the, the town entity, which is working with developer on how that's being managed. So I think we have, in this particular case, we may have an advisory role. In terms of when it does come out, what we would like to see. But it's not part of this special permit in front of us right now, because we actually don't have any real control over that part of it. So, um. It's incredibly.
And we're going to work, I mean, we're, we're certainly putting a lot, we've already spoken with our, you know, parking property management company about. Sort of what's the latest best practices, but I, you know, again, this is, this building is not going to open. Uh, for at least a couple of years. Um, from the perspective of obviously getting permitted, getting funded and then building, which will probably take eighteen to twenty months. Um, so. Just in terms of technology and sort of what the needs are of the immediate butters, it's, it's going to evolve, I'm sure.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Um, so if there are no, um, why don't we jump into the um discussion of tools? Peer review. And, um. We can definitely talk about some of the, the things in the building, like the bike parking and stuff is part of that, because that is part of the um, the structure. So.
So is it fair to say the tool as well will not, that, that we, we can't really get in a. A, a firm agreement about public parking. From either Civic or Tool, because it's part of the. Uh, it's part of the land disposition agreement, which is under the purview of the select board. I, am I understanding that?
Yeah, the select board controls parking. And so they will, you know, the things like, the things that I think, I mean, you raise some, some really good points, um, Nick, in terms of, you know. Short-term parking and things like that. That's all the select board is, they, they're in charge of that, so. Um, we, we can, we can talk about, you know, for instance, bicycle parking. Um, because that's part of the structure, you know, and that's for the residents. Um, but in terms of the public um stuff, that's all. We don't, we don't really have purview over that, so.
Okay.
Um, so. But, um, so, so why don't, um, why don't we start with the tool report? Um, do we have anyone from Tool with us this evening?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay, so, um. So why don't we just, um, Sam, are you going to lead your, your discussion there or is someone else going to do that?
So, um, I'll turn it over to Michael Santos to lead that discussion, but I'll, I'll just say that. Um, you know, we're gonna. We're gonna provide a, an overview of our responses, but there will be a more formal written. Response that gets submitted to the planning office and Tool. So there can be further. Um, reaction from Tool. Um, but, uh, Mike, do you want to take it away?
Uh, yep, yep. Thank you, Sam. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thank you for your time tonight. My name is Michael Santos with, with VHB. A registered professional engineer with a focus in transportation planning, traffic engineering. I'm responsible for the preparation of the traffic impact and access study that was submitted as part of the site plan application. Um, I, I was at the August eighth planning board meeting where I did go over, um, a review, you know, what. I did go over the traffic study and the conclusions, so I'm not going to rehash anything that's in the traffic study. Um, since then, uh, the town engaged Tool Design to conduct a peer review of the traffic study. Um, they also reviewed the site of the transportation related aspects of the site plans. Um, they did issue a comment letter and I'm here tonight, as, as Sam said, we're going to, I'm going to give an update. On the project related to those comments. And again, um, you know, at sometime after this meeting. We will be issuing a formal written response um as a follow-up to this hearing. So again, Tool, uh, they provided a peer review, uh, they provided comments on both the transportation related elements of the site plans. Um, some of which we actually were discussed earlier this evening. And they did have a couple of comments on the technical aspects of the traffic study. Um, so I'm going to, uh, to go over their comments. They had about ten comments. Um, overall that we need to respond to. Um. I will let other team members uh chime in on um any comments related to the site plans if uh we need additional information. So the, the first, um, the first comment was a related to electric vehicle charging stations. So Tool recommended that they be installed on the site. Um, and just, just so you know, the, uh, the project will meet all, all of the building code requirements and state requirements. With respect to the charging stations and also EV readiness, I believe, um. So twenty percent of the spaces need to be EV ready. Um, so we will be meeting that. Um, I, I don't know, you know, where the spaces will be located yet, if we have those shown on the plans. Um, but, you know, we, we will meet all the requirements for electric vehicle charging. Um, then the next comments, they, they did have some comments about, uh. Information related to loading, deliveries, trash operations and pickup drop-off activity. Um, I, I think if, if we want to share the site plans, Sam or whoever's controlling that, we can, we can show this, but. Um, I, I think Joe already covered a lot of this stuff. Um, so again, the, uh, there's going to be a designated space for the loading and deliveries at the rear of the site. So you can kind of see that in that, um, you know, in the orange area where, you know, we carved out some space for easier turning maneuvers. For, uh, you know, for delivery vehicles, Amazon trucks. Um, and that, that's also where the trash uh operations will be located, so there's plenty of room for trash trucks to maneuver. In and out of that, of that area. Um, and also, uh, short-term pickup, drop-off, um, all, it can also happen back there. We, we're also proposing one space on the south side of Waterfield Road. You can kind of see that at the right side of the plan. The hatched area, so we're looking to designate that as short-term. Um, short-term parking essentially for pickup and drop-off and, um. Short-term, you know, short-term loading for vehicles that can, that can fit there. Um, so, you know, again, all of this will be incorporated into the updated site plans until the next submission. Um, the, there, they did have a comment about additional doorways, um. Uh, to be provided along the west side of, of the building for easier access, egress to the businesses on Church Street. So this, this plan shows that there is an additional door on that, on that side to provide better pedestrian access. To those, uh, those properties, to the back of the properties on Church Street. Um, they did, they did recommend extending, so that same sidewalk, um, currently it, it, it extends out to there's a, you can kind of see a small stairwell. I believe that's at thirty six Church Street. It extends to that stairwell and then, then it doesn't go any further. Um, they did comment that, you know, we should consider extending that a little bit further if. You know, the abutters were looking to extend that. This plan shows that we're, we're just reconstructing the existing sidewalk. Um, you know, we're not going to extend it any further. Um, you know, we think that the way that it's shown right now gives good access to those, to the abutting properties on Church Street. Um, there was a, um, a comment on the bike racks in bicycle parking, so we did, we did discuss this, um. The, the, they did recommend that the resident bike parking be in the first floor. I think the plans, you know, we just discussed this, they're shown in the basement. Um, for some residents, and we're also showing some exterior parking. Uh, it was the, uh, eighteen. Eighteen covered spaces. That are provided outside, so, you know, residents will be able to use those spaces. Um, those, I believe they'll be, also be open to visitors. And then if anybody else that wants more secure bicycle storage, we'll, we'll have bicycle parking in the, you know, in the basement of the building. So there's a good mix of covered, um, convenience spaces outside, um, for both visitors and residents. And then also in the, the basement level of the garage, there will be, there, there will be some spaces. And again, the, the zoning code, I, I believe Joe said there's going to be a, uh. And again, the the zoning code, I I believe Joe said there's gonna be a uh. Capacity for up to eighteen bicycles um outside of the building. Zoning code requires, I believe, one bike rack or, you know. Basically, uh, space for two bicycles for every twenty five units, which would be, you know, six exterior spaces, so. We're providing triple of what's required for the exterior uh bicycle storage. Um, one of the uh comments that tool had was uh just more of a tech- technical in nature related to crash data. Um, so in the in the traffic study, we provided crash data. Um, for the years twenty fifteen to twenty nineteen, um. Since then, Mast dot uh formalized their data for twenty twenty. Um, and they asked us to look into that, um, based on the Mast dot data, I mean, this, there might be other data that is not in the Mast dot database, but we typically. Use the Mast dot data to identify any safety issues. Um, along Waterfield Road between uh Church Street and Mystic Valley Parkway. There is just one, one crash that was documented in the Mast dot um database, so that that'll be included as part of the uh the written response as well. Um, so there's really no, you know, the the new data didn't really uncover. Any uh major safety issues on Waterfield Road. Um, one of their comments was also uh related to unbundling. Parking from the residential units, which means. You know, the the parking doesn't come with the units. Um, that some of the, somebody from the ownership team may maybe able to describe this better, but. It's my understanding that the the part, the parking will still be bundled with the units, and it's due to tax credit reasons. If anybody else wants to chime in, um, to provide a little bit more information, um, please do, but just. So you know that um, the the spaces will not be unbundled from the units.
Yeah, ju- just to clarify that, the rule is that we cannot unbundle the. Um, the subsidized units. Um, so all of those forty units have to have a parking space come with them. But we can unbundle the parking for the market rate units. So that's something we will consider. Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And the uh, the the final comment that they had was related to uh mitigation measures. And they they did have two comments about that. So as you can see on this plan, on actually on both both uh, both of these plans. We we don't see the opposite side of Waterfield Road, but there is a, we're we're reconstructing. The existing crosswalk that connects the site to the to the common on the north side of Waterfield Road. Um, it's right near the uh, that pickup drop off zone, so we are proposing curb extensions on Waterfield Road. Which is, it's consistent with the downtown improvement action plan that tool put together, and it's also consistent with the other um improvements that you have at the. The Church Street side of Waterfield Road. With the curb extensions, um, uh, you know, we think it'll provide for much better pedestrian safety. It shortens the crossings, it makes the pedestrians more visible. Um, because they're not being blocked by parked vehicles. Um, they, the tool wanted us to actually um. Beef up that curb extension, there's one, like I said, there's one on the other side of of Waterfield Road that's not shown on here. Um, they wanted another curb extension for the uh, the crossing on Laroay Road, so you know, right now, I don't I don't know what. What the construction status is of Laroay Road, but when we went out there, it was kind of closed to traffic. So we're also looking into installing a curb extension. For the Laroay Road crossing, so they'll be, you know, we'll shorten the crossing across Waterfield Road. And then again, the uh, up across Laroay Road on the opposite side of the street. Um, so tho- those should show up in the updated site plans. And then finally, um. As I mentioned, there there's tool put together downtown improvement action plan. Which focuses, I I think it was four kind of key areas through the through downtown Winchester. Um, one of them being the intersection at Thompson Street and Waterfield Road. And the um, all of the, you know, the multiple curb cuts that serve the parking. The parking areas on the the east side of the commuter rail tracks. Um, so, you know, they had provided some recommendations in that for pedestrian safety. Um, curb extensions, consolidating um, the curb cuts uh in vehicular circulation. And, you know, providing a new sidewalk on the south side of Waterfield, right now, there's no sidewalk on. The south side of Waterfield Road, once you go east of the bridge. Um, so we we did put together a concept plan again, which we will provide in. Uh, oh, this is great, you can actually see the the curb extension on Laroay Road, so you can see the uh, the the, what we're proposing there. Um, but there, you know, the final, the final comment was related to, you know, you could kind of goes off the. Off to the bottom of the screen here, which is the east side of the tracks. Um. So we did put together a concept plan, it kind of mimics what they what they had in there, um. You know, in the downtown improvement action plan. Um, where the project team will work with the town to determine the most appropriate, um, I guess mi- mitigation measures for that. Um, I don't, I don't know what that means yet, but. I think that requires a little bit, um, you know, some some further discussion um with the project team in the town. To uh, you know, figure out how, you know, they want to move forward with. With the improvements, whether it's, you know, providing design work or. Uh, you know, I'm not sure how that works yet, but we will, we will um coordinate with town on. Um, on those improvements as well. So, you know, again, all all of this will be included in a, you know, formal written response to the tool comment letter. Um, which will, you know, will provide to the planning board sometime after this meeting. So that 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 covers it, and you know, again, most of their, most of their comments were related to the design of the site. Um, offsite improvements, there really wasn't, weren't many comments related to the the technical aspects of the traffic study. So again, thank, thanks for your time, um, and I'll be here for any questions.
Okay, oh, thank you, uh, I I did wanna um, reach out to Brian Mander of uh Winchester Engineering. Brian, did engineering have any comments?
We don't have any comments at this time.
Okay, um. So let's, um. I've got a number of questions, we've got about ten minutes left. Um, so the the two things that we do have to do is we have to. Um, if we have questions about, you know, that we want to direct, um, about the um response to tool, but we also have to talk about. How we wanna go forward with design review and scheduling uh the next. Um, hearing, or I should say the continuation of the hearing. So why don't we take um five minutes, uh, go around the board and see if there are any um particular comments? If you could just do one comment apiece. On on the response to tools. Anyone just chime in?
I would chime in to say that I think that all of your responses seem reasonable and productive. And um progressive in terms of protecting people and in in encouraging. Alternate modes of transportation and looking out for the interests of the town, I think the parking management plan will be really important. And I think that the planning board and engineering should. Very closely together, review the circulation of the the paved areas to the. East of the building, but I think on a whole, you've responded to the police. I mean, the tra- the fire department's um concerns, um, well, I'm still unclear about what's going on with the. Sidewalk behind the buildings along church, um, but other than that, I think this is great progress.
Okay, um, I have a, I have one quick question, um. Is there elevator to access to the basement for people who want to take their bicycles, who don't want to have to go down the ramp or go down a stairwell? To get to the basement? Bicycle parking?
Yes, Joe, do you wanna take up?
Sorry, yes, sorry, there is.
Okay. Um, thank you, uh, any other comments from the board?
Um, I I got my um questions answered, thank you.
I don't have any further comments.
Okay, um, I have a bunch, so real quickly, um. So I'm a little concerned about pedestrian safety in the the doorway that you're opening up onto the alleyway. So that is going to be presumably a delivery alleyway, and there are trash. Um, there are dumpsters there. Um, so I'm a little concerned about pedestrians just opening a door, opening the door and walking into an active alleyway. So I would be interested in in how you could ensure that there's a clear. Um, safe zone for pedestrians to access, um. The back of the buildings on Church Street, so that's just a comment. Um, the other comment I have in regards to that access is that. Um. I don't know how many, so you've got the one stairwell going back. Which is essentially, and then you're saying it can service. Both, say, the corner structure, the structure that's on the corner of Church and Waterfield. And then the one next to it, but I don't, doesn't that require that? You would have to have an easement from the property owner on the corner to allow people to go onto their property and then go to the property to the next to it? I don't know if it's, if you could just bring up the diagram, maybe it'd be clearer. I couldn't really explain that well.
Yeah, I'll bring it up.
This behind Church Street?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, so if just, uh, so you've got the, you've gonna build up that that stairwell.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so if you just have the, yeah, thank you. So if you just have the one. Entrance or the one stairs. If they wanna access, um, so we're just gonna be able to access that one property, is that it?
That's right, so basically, we would have to get permission from Ron to rebuild those stairs on his property.
Yep.
Um, the sidewalk is on our property.
Right.
And so, and we've, we've stood out there and. Stared at it and, you know, come in, I think we could, it's fair to say, come to an agreement verbally, and we'd have to certainly paper it to for him to allow us to. To make those connections.
Yeah, is there any existing connection to thirty eight Church Street right now, the one next to it?
Further down?
Yeah.
Um, there is a, no, so the sidewalk stops where you see it.
Yep.
Um, and then there is sort of a, an unofficial. Right at the corner of where it says two story masonry building. There's like a little, there's a little, it's it's basically same grade. But it goes from a parking space, so if you if you traverse that area, you run into a car. Basically, if you're coming down and then you run into a car.
Okay.
Um, and there's no sidewalks or anything in that location.
Okay.
We're just abandoning it.
Okay, so there's, I'm I'm just, yeah, okay, great. Um, and then I just wanna note, yeah. That's it for me, um, at the moment, everything else I can put in writing.
Um, I I do wanna point out one thing about the egress door, um, you mentioned concern about pedestrian safety, um. There are some bollards shown there. Uh, on either side of the door that would prevent vehicles from. Getting too close to that door. So I don't know if, I don't know if that addresses your concern at all.
Do they run along the length of the building?
Yeah, there's that whole row of them right there.
Okay, yeah, so as long as, I, you know, you wanna make sure the pedestrian feels safe and that they are safe, so that might.
Are the bollards removable for fire trucks?
The the fire truck would not be able to pull in that far and make the turn, I don't believe, the the design for the fire truck. The twenty foot wide access for the fire truck. Sort of stops near the front of the building there.
I see it there. And then it goes to fourteen feet.
Yeah.
I see. And there was no proposal to continue that twenty one or, what, yeah, twenty, up to the.
It it wasn't needed because the, at at that point, the fire. The firefighters will have enough hose length to get around the building.
Yes, I think I did hear that, thank you. Um, but I'm still confused about the sidewalk at the east. Border of the property, if I'm not mistaken, that's east, right? No, that's west. Is that west?
Yes.
The back sidewalk. So a lot of people are gonna end up walking that way. To cut through to Church Street, because that's what they do now. And if you pan up to the driveway that's between. Two buildings on church. Let me see if I can see it.
So they're essentially trespassing, is what you're saying, Sally?
It's essentially, there's, there's like longstanding trespassing going on. Um, and it makes me uncomfortable to be talking about awarding a permit. That would almost perpetuate that. Or even reinforce it. So I just think that the right people need to talk to the right people about access easements or whatever it is that is being presumed to be in place here.
No, we, I, I think we've, we have talked, so Ron is the owner of those properties, and we've. We've spoken, we've met out there, we've walked it, um, and we've. We need to put it on paper, but we've agreed in principle about. That he wants to have those connections.
I would think, I think it's a good lively way to cut through town.
We would never, we would never put them there if, you know, he did not want them.
No, I just, I'm really glad to hear that that's already.
Yeah.
In place or on its way, that's excellent.
Yep.
Um, okay, so, um, if there are no other um comments from the board, then we should move on to. Um, design review, I know that, um, it was kind of put on hold. Until um, the results of the redesign for fire were done, um. Are there any comments from the board as to why we wouldn't want it to move forward right away?
No, I think we should move forward.
I agree.
Okay, well then, uh. I agree as well. Terry's nodding and I can't see Nick for.
Yeah, I think they've been very thoughtful about addressing all the concerns that have come up, we're all curious to see how. The little things get sorted and the parking will will hang over us, but I think it's going forward beautifully.
Yeah, I I agree.
Okay, um, so I think, I think you guys have a clear direction from us on that. Um, so the next question will be, um, when we will. Um. Oh, we should note that we do have some more public input that we got before we close this or continue this hearing. Um, we've got a.
We're gonna have, we're gonna have a public comment, uh, part of the hearing, and I know someone's hands been up, I I don't know whether, uh, that's gonna happen.
Yeah, you know, we usually do, and I just realized that, um, we're running a, yeah, let's do that, so first off, um, Taylor, you wanna say something about? Public comment we've received in writing? Up to now?
Yeah, so there, the public comment that we received in writing from a butter, um, forty church. We did read it, or we did go over that comment last meeting, uh, I did add it to this, uh, this agenda, cuz we didn't. It wasn't added to a agenda, but we did give the uh, the commenter an opportunity to speak on that. Um, so that that comment is in the, in the packet, it's also uploaded online. But we do also have, uh, uh, Joe Carley, who has his hand raised, who, uh, deal with your permission. I would like to let him.
Yeah.
Comment.
So, uh, if you could identify yourself and where you live, and please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Joe Carley, I'm the owner of a tabula restaurant which resides in one of the. In thirty four Church Street, which is gonna be a budding where that sidewalk is. And we currently have a garden in the grass area that's labeled where the sidewalk is and the stairs are going. Or the stairs are. Uh. Are those stairs gonna be blocked by a retaining wall? I just. Wasn't certain sure on that, when you were saying that you've talked to Ron about it, and Ron wants those to continue.
So that the stairs will connect to the sidewalk.
Okay. Is there any of the, is the sidewalk gonna be taking up any of that grass area where the garden is or no?
So, right now, the grass in the garden area encroaches quite a bit on the Winchester property. Um, we could get out there and sort of mark it out, but it is, I believe. Um, well, why don't, why don't we get out there and put some paint down so you can see where the property line is? But it it does, a lo- a lot of that green space, that little green area does. Come pretty far into the Winchester property line.
Hmm.
Okay.
Okay.
That's all right.
Uh, thank you, um. Are there, um, any other comments from anyone? Um. As usual, you can always mail your comments to planningboard@winchester.us. And that email address goes to the entire board as well as to, uh, Taylor Herman, our town planner, so we will all see your comments. Um, if there are no other, if there are no comments, then we should talk about scheduling. The continuation, um, so. Uh, so we have in hand, we have the Weston and Sampson in hand, correct? Um, have you folks at, um, Civic Council had a chance to go over that?
We have, uh, and I think. I think it was an open question, um, whether the town would expect. A, a resubmission of some of the, the civil documents before. Um. Before going back and forth with Weston and Sampson. Uh, I know we still need to, I, I think, uh. Well, our engineer can speak to this, he's on the call. Uh, but I think we need to finalize some of the civil plan changes and, and drainage plans. And then those would be resubmitted.
Okay, so what sort of a timeframe do you think you need to do that?
Uh, Mike, Mike, what do you think?
Uh.
All right, thank you. Sorry, I, I couldn't unmute myself. Um. That's a good question, I think we were kinda waiting on, you know. This hearing and this like word hearing that just occurred, so, um. I'll just need to meet with our team and come up with a schedule for that, but it's, you know, it's a few weeks, I would imagine.
Okay, so. Um, a few weeks, so why don't we look at. Uh, our next meeting after this is the twelfth and then it's the twenty-sixth. That's not gonna work. Um, cause I think we would want to have at that meeting, we would probably want to have, um, some. Of the design review come back to us, um, and also. Um, it would be good to have Weston and Sampson. Response to your, um, newly submitted or revised. Stop, so I think we're talking about January at this point.
Can I ask one question, just thinking on the fly a little bit, the, the design reviewer? And this is a little bit to. Just brainstorm how to move this. Along, the designer reviewer I imagine will have some comments. What I don't wanna have happen is us finalize all the civil again and then have the designer reviewer change something that then. I'm wondering if we just do the design reviewer now. And then backfill with the civil and Mike can kick me under the table if I'm speaking of.
No, I, I, I think that makes a lot of sense. We wanna stream streamline it as much as possible and, um. Yeah, it'd be great if we could have some feedback prior to submitting. The package and then when we do submit the revised package, it will. Um, that can go directly to Weston and Sampson without. You know, the planning board's involvement so that their review can continue. You know, prior, prior to the next hearing as you suggested.
Um, for, for, for someone who doesn't quite understand the scope, when, when you say your civil stuff. Uh, could you comment on how design would impact that? I mean, I, I wouldn't imagine design would, for instance. Change how you're handling, you know. Stormwater or anything like that, so what, what is your, what are your concerns there? I guess I'm ignorant with that.
Yeah, my.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I think just my, if they, um. Tweak, so for example, the design reviewer. Says, you know, we want the pedestrian to come out, they should look at the pedestrians. Coming out of this door and therefore we have to move sidewalks and things like that, right? That, that design choice about how people move through and approach the building. Has an impact on civil, and if we just redid the civil, then we have, you know, whereas if we can get them to look at the building. Give all their comments, we kind of know on a macro scale that the civil works on this project, we can handle stormwater, we can handle. Sewer, all those types of things, so I think. Uh, you know, and at this point, it just needs to be tweaked around this revised design, so. If we could get them to go ahead and do the design review from an architectural and sort of all that perspective, and then. Once that's done, say, okay, let's wrap up the civil to be coordinating with that. Mike, does that sound right?
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's accurate, yep, yep, just any of these, you know, small suggested. Changes, it would just be nice to incorporate into the site design plan, the grading plan, how that might. Affect it, and I expect it would be minor, but it would, um, it would just be much cleaner to. To catch that if, if that's something that the design reviewer would comment on.
Um, okay, thanks, uh, that gives me a lot more insight into what your concerns are. So I think, um, we're, we're looking at January the ninth. Because, uh, I don't think January the twenty-sixth is kind of tough for a lot of people, and then the next one after that is January the second. And that's kind of tough, cause the first is a holiday, so. We're looking at our next hearing being on January the ninth. And. And, uh. You guys have, um. You already have. I guess we're just waiting on you guys to, um, drop an escrow amount for the design reviewer. Is that, is that where we're at? We just need to check to get that started.
Yeah, we'll get that right over.
I'm sorry, did you, did you just skip over, um, December twelfth as a date? For the next.
Cause that's only in two weeks and it sounds like this is gonna take a lot longer than two.
Oh, but I thought the design review can continue there.
So would you like to have an initial? So we need to find out if Dennis Carlon can actually get us something by the twelve.
That, that's what I was understanding about the civic, civil stuff, is that we, we should get the design review rolling. And then civil can deal with it.
I agree.
If he can. Yeah.
Do we, do we need to have the planning board? Um. Where, how do you want the planning board to interact on this, in this scale? Do you wanna, do you want, um, see if Dennis can come in in two weeks? And, and see if he can give us something?
If he can come, if, we, we, we would be okay with that, if he could comment the two weeks on the design.
Yeah, I just, I don't know.
Yeah.
Taylor, have we, have we been?
Yeah, I, 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 I agree with everyone, that, that would be great, uh, that's gonna be really difficult to pull off. Um, we can plan on it, um. I will say that I think it's unlikely, but we can certainly try.
Okay, so let's, um. Let's just schedule something in two weeks. And if it happens that, um, nothing, that the, the plans don't align, we'll just continue it until. Um, it. Is possible.
January ninth.
January the ninth.
But the letter, you know, their letter could still be issued. Let's say it's on the fifteenth of December, you know, if, if is when the letter is issued, then we could react to it still, so that would be okay. And then discuss it, discuss it at the next hearing.
Yes, yes, uh, regardless of when. Yeah. That'll come out independent of when the board meets, so, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so, um, why don't we, uh, get a motion to continue this public hearing until. Seven thirty on, uh, December the twelfth?
I'll move that.
I'll second it.
And let's do roll call, um, Carrie?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Sally?
Hi.
Uh, Yicheng?
Hi.
And I say I as well. Okay, uh, thank you very much, everyone, um.
Thank you.
We will see you folks in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks. Um, so, uh, let me go back to our agenda. So we have, um, a ZB A. Petition to go over, um, why don't we crank through these, uh? Taylor, if you could pop that up?
I can, I can just go.
Yeah, go.
Ready?
Go ahead.
Um, so we have, uh, ZB A petition, um, if the petitioner is here, please raise your hand, we'll give you the opportunity to, uh. To, to speak, so we, uh, the petitioner is seeking a special permit. Uh, to construct a, a replacement of an exterior wood landing stair with a two-by-six addition to create a small pantry space next to their kitchen. The proposed, the proposed addition continues the existing non-conforming setback to the east side of the house. Um. Site, um, site traffic drainage, uh, do, and do not need to be considered for. Uh, for the, this property, this is a very small, uh, small addition, uh, a total of twelve square feet. Uh, that does encroach on the setback which they currently already encroach on. Uh, currently, uh, four-point-four, the setback requirement is fifteen feet. Uh, they are currently four-point-four feet away from their setback, the, uh, proposed design does not extend any further into the setback, it remains at the four-point-four. Um. Uh, Brian Manter from Engineering, do you have any comments?
Uh, no, Ben Jaren does not have any comments on this project.
Great.
Oh.
Um. Cara, believe that you're a petitioner, you have the opportunity to speak to the planning board tonight about your proposal.
Well, I don't have too much to say, um. I submitted some things that I, I think kind of explained or would say anything that I would wanna, um. Um, to say about the project, um, we're looking to add, yeah, just a small pantry as you're circling there on the screen. To the side of our house, it would be in the spot where we currently have. An old little porch, um, there's a door there with an egress to the side yard. Well, we, we don't really have much on, on that side of the property, but we don't use it at all, and so. As we're doing a kitchen renovation, we had the idea of using that space. To add some, um, some valuable storage with any of these, you know, beautiful older homes. Storage can be tough, so, um, that seemed like a logical. Place to put it, um, and it would clean it up for our neighbors, um. Um, who are really the only people who would be able to see it, um, and so they're very much in favor of the project, it wouldn't be very visible from the road. The goal is to have it really blend in with the first story of the house, um, so it would be. Very minimally visible. And, um, yeah, and as I said, it would just add some, some really valuable storage space, a pantry. Um. For the inside of our house.
Okay, thank you, um. I. You know, if, if the board wishes to discuss it or someone wants to, uh, make a motion?
Hmm, I think this is a lot of work for twelve square feet, but, um. I, 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 I would like, I'd make a motion to recommend favorable action.
Um, is there a second?
I second it.
Thanks, and, and Yicheng, are you talking about having to go through a special permit for this?
Yes.
Yeah, I was going to say the same thing, this is one of the reasons we fought for three-five-five. Um, let's, uh, any other further comments? Then, uh, directly to a vote, um, Sally?
Hi.
Oh, this would be, I'm sorry, the motion would be to recommend favorable action.
Right.
On the application to, to create.
Yeah, what's, um.
An application for zero-zero-seven.
Okay, thank you, so recommend favorable action on, on applicant, on ZB A petition for zero-zero-seven. Uh, let's try that again, Sally?
And I second it.
Yes, and, uh, your vote, yay or nay, Sally?
Oh, uh, yay.
Okay, Yicheng?
Yay.
Nick?
Hi.
Uh, Carrie?
Hi.
And I say I as well, uh. Uh, good luck, Cara, um, it really is a shame that you have to go through a special permit for this tiny little thing, but. Um, those are the rules at the moment, so, good luck.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so we're off now to, uh, our next one, which is a pre-application, uh. And Taylor, if you wanna lead us through that one, please.
This is pre-application for thirty-two Church Street. Excuse me while I scroll, try to find it. Um. So, uh, the submission process, uh, thirty-two Church Street in, in, in the CBD petitioner is. Uh, Joe Carley, um, who will have the opportunity to. Uh, to speak on this. Uh, thirty-two Church Street is in, is in the CBD, it is not listed as a historical resource, source under the map on seven-point-three-point-four. Uh, the proposal is to. Take the existing door, uh, which is swings inward, um, in order to do. Um, in order to pass code, in order to, uh, do their interior work, this door needs to be a secondary point of egress. Which requires it to swing out. Uh, since, since the door is swinging out, exterior renovations need to happen with this little punch. Through on, on, on the exterior, which leads. All, all, all work on exterior, um, buildings in CBD means it has to come in front of the planning board. When it comes to the design, we have the existing conditions. Uh. Uh, shown here with the door that swings in. Replace with the existing dis, conditions with the door that swings out. The door that is being replaced will be the same door as the door that is currently the main point of egress into the building. It will also be an addition of this window, which will match the current window in the building. Uh, on page sixty-seven of the handout, you can see the material choices from the opponent. Because, uh, because this process requires submission requirements. Uh, the, uh. The petitioner is, uh, requesting waivers. Um, I, I met with the petitioner and we are requesting waivers for all. Um, for all requirements except for visual plans, seven-three-sixteen-seven. Uh, we do not believe that it is, um, any of the other. Um. Submission requirements are applicable to this. Uh. To, to, to this project, it's up to the planning board to decide if they want to accept those waivers, issue them or deny them.
Okay, um. So I think, um, so. Is there, are there questions the board has of, of the petitioner? Do we, do we have any questions you wanna ask before we go through this laundry list?
No, I think it's a fairly simple, um, plan and, uh, the waivers seem, uh, reasonable.
Um, any other comments?
First time we're seeing this, this, um, waiver proposal?
This is a free application, so yeah.
Right, okay, cause I, I would have to study it and read it to respond.
Oh, wait, you, this was, was this in our packet?
It wasn't.
Yeah, it was submitted, uh, they, it, yes, it was not.
Okay.
So can we, um.
So a lot of these, um, waivers are about the site and the. Like the part of the buildings that, that they're not gonna touch. So it, it's a, it's a change in the facade because. In order for fire egress, people have to shove out, they can't be trapped in the door, right?
It's a small pop-out of the facade.
It's a small pop-up, right, so I, I don't think that. A lot of these things, and it's not historic building, so there's not gonna be historic preservation stuff.
Yeah, I can see that.
But then design review will have to go through, we'll see it and historic will see it as well.
Yes, yes, they will.
That is correct.
When it's submitted. So maybe we could just walk through the waivers and we can do a yay or nay on the waivers. And if there's some point where there's concern, we can just maybe hold those, hold off on that, so. Um. Project narrative waiver requested. Um, does anyone feel that that should not be?
I mean, one paragraph would be fine.
Yeah, they already gave it. And verbally, so they just typed that up and put that as the narrative.
Okay.
That needing to change the swing and therefore needing to pop out the front.
Okay, so we will request a short project narrative, so we will, so seven-three-sixteen-two stands. Uh, seven-three-sixteen-three existing conditions plan. Site grading, wetlands, wetland buffers and four-hundred-foot site plan.
That doesn't. That doesn't seem necessary.
The only thing I would ask about that is if if they're going to re- uh, re- restore the sidewalk to exactly. Or match what's there. But they might not be changing the footprint of the building. Well, they are changing the footprint. So just make sure that the sidewalk is in good repair when they're done.
Um, I think that might be. That would be a site, that would be under the site development plan, maybe, but in terms of existing conditions. Um, is, do I have a motion to waive seven three sixteen three?
Um, I would, I would make that motion. I think it would just be a call out. In the plan, it says replace to match existing.
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Um, so is there a second for that?
Yeah, I can second that.
Okay, um, all in favor? Carrie?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Okay, seven three sixteen three is waived. Uh, site development plan. Um, I think it's pretty much the same question.
I make a motion to waive it.
Uh, is there a second?
I, I mean, second Sally.
Okay, uh.
Can we do a voice note just altogether unanimous?
I'm sorry.
Is it possible to get through the list more quickly if we all just say aye at once?
Now we have to do a roll call, I mean, for all of them together?
No, no, well, uh, either.
Well, I have to, we have to do a roll call. If ever we do a vote, it has to be a roll call.
Okay.
So, so.
Let's do, do it quickly.
Okay, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Okay, uh, building development program.
I make a motion to waive it.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, seven three sixteen six phasing plan.
I make a motion to waive that.
Second? Thank you.
Aye.
Hi Carrie?
Aye.
Uh, Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, let's see, now we're off to three seven three sixteen eight, traffic and parking. Motion to waive?
Yes, so move.
Uh, second?
Second.
Uh, Carrie?
Aye.
Nick?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, seven three sixteen nine, open space plan.
So moved to wave.
Second? Thank you. Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, historic preservation plan, seven three sixteen ten.
Motion to wave.
Second?
Second.
Uh, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, where are we at? Seven three sixteen eleven utilities plan?
Motion to wave.
Second?
Could I, could I just ask a question about that? Isn't that um, something that the building department requires for them to have? Um, plans that show like if they're moving outlets or whatever in the wall?
If they're moving.
This is site utilities.
Yeah, this is if they had to bring in another power line, yeah.
I get it, or sewer or water supply. I get it now. Thank you.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, stormwater management plan, seven three sixteen twelve.
Motion to wave.
And second.
Okay, N- Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Landscape plan, seven three sixteen thirteen.
I make a motion to wave.
And I second.
Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Uh, seven three sixteen fourteen, housing plan.
Anyone want this?
Move to wave.
Okay, second.
I, uh, sec- second.
Okay, uh, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Are we almost done here? Is there any more?
That's it.
That's it? Alright.
But what we are gonna see is seven three sixteen seven. Um.
Yes.
I don't know if we voted on the three D bird's eye view.
Oh, we did not vote on the three D bir- bird's eye view.
Uh, motion to wave. Uh, seven point three point sixteen point seven.
Subsection three D.
Subsection three D bird's eye view.
Okay, uh, is there a second?
Yeah, I second that.
Okay, Nick?
Aye.
Carrie?
Aye.
Sally?
Aye.
Yicheng?
Aye.
I say aye as well. Okay, now we're done, right?
Great. Looking forward to seeing the seven three sixteen seven remitting items.
Okay, great. Uh, any, anything else we have to? On this one, I think we're good.
It's a pre-application meeting, right?
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, Taylor, what?
Uh, design review and historical will will see it next week or the week after that they have it on their schedule and then after that it will come back to us.
Okay, excellent. Um, let us move on to uh. CBD, no, sorry, CBD design review on forty church street. You wanna to the stuff, Taylor, please?
Uh, the per- the petitioner, the previous. One has a question.
Oh, yes, go ahead. Sorry, missed that. Joseph Carley, please.
Hi, everyone. Uh, I just wanna correct the address. It's thirty-six, not thirty-two church street that the doorway is gonna be going to.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you. I think our votes are still good. Please let our votes still be good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, uh, CBD designer view, forty church street. Taylor, please.
This is a follow-up from. Our meeting with the petitioners last time on November sixth. Uh, we met in person. We have received. I'm gonna try to make this bigger. Let me know if you can still see it.
Do we, do we have a quick list of what the DRC requests were?
It was submitted in their um, minutes.
Right there. There was a subsequent version of the packet. Which. Is this it, Taylor?
These are, this is the exchange that I had with.
Yeah, if you scroll up, um. Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we'll wanna talk about, I mean, we've been asking about the windows and we'll wanna talk about that.
Do we, do we have all the original list of requests from DRC from?
Yes, in their meeting minutes of Wednesday, November first.
Yes, do we have it available to view this evening?
Taylor, do you have that?
It's not in the packet, but I'll pull it up if you want to.
I think.
Converse, I will pull it up.
Yeah, I think, I think we should take a look at that so we understand. Um, what was requested, what was submitted. And uh, what the important differences are.
Where we left off.
Okay.
Just give me a sec while I do it.
Yep, yep.
I, I did speak with Ellen Spencer and um, Jamie DeValle. Um, and we, we went through the, their list and 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 talked about each of the items. Um, and I, I think I have a good understanding of what, what their requests were. Um.
One, go ahead then, please.
What?
Go ahead then, please.
Oh, oh, alright, so if we can go through um, A one to A one, please. Um, they were concerned, and this is not part of their designing view, but they were concerned about how the cantilever. On the left, how the cantilever bay window would be held up since they're opening up the um, foundation to install this new garage. And uh, in in this, these drawings, the um, petitioner did include these steel beams. Um, to show that they were gonna, they were gonna um, structurally uphold this, this um, bay window up above. Um, they were also concerned on A one to the right here, the first floor. I believe that this particular bay window um, to, on the upper right here. Uh, they, they, there is a leaded, leaded transom on the picture window portion of it. It's kind of a one foot wide kind of a thing, and they, they were concerned about. Keeping that, and um, I happened to walk, the walk uh, uh, over there and um. Talk, talked with the uh, got a tour of it from, from the owner and um, looked at it and um. Saw the condition of it, and so I, I mean, I could comment on that, but i- it's, it's not, um, it's fairly far down the, the property. So you can't see it from the public way. Um, and the, the condition of it isn't as sort of spectacular as I had thought that. But i- i- it's, that I think the petitioner had, had um, asked to, you know, they, they, they do wanted to. Keep it, but they wanted to use a usable window on it, and so um, said that they would retain it and. They didn't indicate it on this, these drawings, but they wanted to retain it and display it somewhere within the building, but not there. For now. But it, I, I think the petitioner. Why noted that it's far from public view. Um, and if we could go down the drawings, up, uh, actually stay there, um. And the, the design review committee was also concerned about the front entrance. Here to the um, lower left of this plan. Um, it was in a style that was um, mimicking the, the. Back building behind this building, which the owner also owns. Um, and it's sort of a colonial looking. Uh, facade before, and they had encouraged them to um, change it to match the front modern portion. Um, so just extend the stucco, I, I, excuse me, extend the hardy plank. Um, and just include um, two over two windows or something more contemporary than the colonial windows. And if you can go um, to the next plan, set of plans. Um, so the um, DRC was concerned at the, the patio, the front. Front patio wasn't being used, and so therefore not nee- needing the railings that were proposed, but the petitioner does wanna use it as an exterior patio. Um, and they, they use, they opened up a um, oh, existing window to become a door to the left. Um, and the railing, um, I think the DRC had recommended, um, because it used. It used, again, reminiscent of the back um, building, they, they use a. Sort of design element from them, but that, the DRC recommended that they do something more contemporary, and I think the, the phrase was. Uh. The phrase that they use was, let me see, cable railing. Um, so I don't think they indicated whether or not it was wood or metal, and the petitioner in these drawings indicate that they are metal. Um, which is what my understanding was too, but DRC's. Um, comments from before were cable railing.
What, what does that mean, gable? Was it just with?
Cable, cable. Cable railing, so like cables, like metal. So something that was less prominent um, than the ones they had proposed, and so that.
And you can, you can see through it, I mean, it's, you can see, okay. And is that, is that acceptable to you, to, to us?
Um, yeah, that, that was my understanding with, of them, and, and the Ellen's. Today's email said that they would, should be wood, so I would then. Think that that's a miscommunication in some ways, but.
Let's, let's, yeah, let's, let's, if we could get through.
I'm sorry, I'll, I'll further.
Yeah.
Um, so the windows were the big problem, so um, the. The DRC really wanted the two over twos on the entire building, and for whatever reason, um, the petitioner had ordered the windows. Already and had paid for them, and they are six over sixes that are extended from the building behind, so that he. He had told me that they are the same windows from, from that same building from behind, and so they're too stylistically different. But um, he, he concedes to wanting to then um, restore the facade. Including the bay windows on the second floor, um, so that it's, it's three dimensionally, um. To two over twos as well as one over ones for the arched windows. Um, so when, when I spoke with the petitioner, um, he had, he had. Sort of, what, we worked out some details for the arched windows, so that that upper mullion um. On top doesn't bisect the arch and the rectangle below, it's just sort of one pane extends it, but the, the. Um, my question to them then would be why is there, are there um, rectangles instead of a full arched windows on the. On the um, sides, and then um, the, to the sides. He wanted to just reuse those windows and, and my, my comments to that would be. Well, when I was there, I was like, well, that, that seems like a compromise, and it, it, it. He, he would reorder the windows to the front so that they, they were historically accurate. Um, to the side, he want, because he had paid for them already, and they, they're already sort of there, and it's quite expensive. Um, to keep the six over sixes. Um, and I, my, my thought for a compromise might be that. If they are just grills that are snap bonds, perhaps it might even be better if. If he kept those windows but took the grills off, so they're o- one over one, so they're not as distracting. As the six over sixes, but I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that yet. Um, those were most of the comments, um, and so he, he did, it, so the, these. Um, drawings do indicate the conversations that, that I had with both sides and um. And my comments about sort of the discrepancies are sort of laid bare and um. Know that more can decide what to do about that.
Okay, um. Taylor, were you able to find that list or did you give up on that? Oh, there it is. Okay, so we have windows. Um, wood materials will be replaced with wood, not vinyl. I don't know what that's specific to.
That was mostly about the trim, though, um. Both, both of the um, women from DRC just say hardy plank was okay. So the, the panel, the siding was fine with them.
Okay, and, and what about, um. Like window trim and such, that's all going to be wood or is it?
Wood.
Uh, so wood trim, uh, retrofit the arched windows. Um, you have a comment there, I, I didn't quite catch what you're saying, Yicheng.
So it's the arch windows, right? So it's, it's fairly expensive to get, get the arches. Um, and so some people sort of make it so that you, you make a rectangle insert, and then that top arch. Then is either infill or it would or, or. I don't, I don't, I don't know what the proposed here is. I don't understand the drawings to, uh, it doesn't indicate fully what that means. Um, but there is a rec- that, that one particular line underneath the arch is the problem.
Okay, so if you could zoom in, please, Taylor, so we can. Understand it. So the question is.
Well, one over ones, yeah. See, on the two over twos above, those are what it should look like. Without the grill.
And the one over ones, so are the two small square windows up there as is? So I see, I see the arch window, and then there was some sort of a transom or something above it, right?
Yeah, oh, the, I think those are wood details.
Okay, those are wood details, okay.
But that line underneath the arch is the problem.
Okay, and so, okay, so let's, let's write that down and we'll, I, I know we have Mr. Kiblak in here, so we will. Ask him about that. So it's the, um, somehow the, okay, so could we go back to the, to the list, please, um, Taylor? So we have retrofitting arched windows. Um, maintaining the leaded glass window in the bay driveway. Um. Wide garage door opening, okay. Remove the roof and columns, okay, you've discussed that.
Mm-hmm.
Propose new railing. Obscures the architectural detail of the original house. Um, and so we'll have to see what the. Um, drawings show about that. So there was also a question about, um. There were some details that they requested to be in new drawings, were these?
Yes, they were all included, um.
Okay, so it was.
I believe.
So it was, these are, cuz I know at the meeting, they said the drawings were incomplete, and so this is the list which would, if they were put in the drawings, would be complete.
My understanding is that the, the applicant responded to. My understanding is that the the applicant responded to these requests in the way that they wanted to respond.
Okay, so um. Why don't we take a look at DRC's response to the response? Just so that we.
I just wanna point out this this call out here for steel ulcers with wood posts and handrails. So this indicates, well, I'll let you decide what it indicates.
Well, that's not a cable railing. Cable railings that run along horizontal cable.
Um they can go vertical too.
Oh, they do, okay.
I I think that what they're showing is the more historically accurate, I think, but but not. I mean excluding the material, I think that's kind of the look that we're.
If you look at the design review commit, well.
So what the design review, the the intent of the design review committee comments was to so. Make it so it doesn't obscure the main facade that they're concerned with, which is in the back. So they want something that is less visible, so cable rail would be then less um. Smaller silhouette for you to visually obstruct your view.
Right. So let's let's just go through their reaction to this, okay. Uh they're still talking about six over six.
Could you forward this to me, cause I haven't seen this and I don't.
This is in the second packet that Taylor just said.
Okay.
The arched windows on the second floor front facade have not been changed, this is your, this is the thing you just talked about eaching?
Yes.
Okay. Um leaded glass bay, we've heard, okay. Front elevation shows a metal railing, the material used should be either wood or a wood equivalent.
That that's contrary to what they had. I don't think that is is what the cable railing. Um it's not equivalent and also this is from Ellen Spencer and not from the entire design review.
Right. Okay, so. I think we have, at least I have an I I have a good idea of what was asked and what was received. And so I think at this point, um the board can start, you know, we have we have a decision point to make. Do we feel that there is sufficient material here to um come to a decision by the board? Do we want to wait for the official, um Taylor, when when does the DRC have this on their schedule again?
They say December sixth.
December sixth. Um and is there, are there, you know, are there pain points for this board in terms of what's been provided and what we expect? So I I leave that all open to discussion right now, do we wanna work through this one item at a time? I think I think from my underst- from the list I've just made. Uh the 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 questions raised by the DRC, which are still on, is the six over six versus two over two. We have the arched windows, we have the um. The railing. Um then we have, are the are the drawings sufficiently specific about? The retention of the existing architectural details?
Well, are we supposed to assess that for ourselves? I mean, I'm very grateful that. But.
Let me let me just finish this list, so drawing sufficient. Or preservation. And then we have um we have the. The the leaded glass window and are there anything else that the board is concerned about? That we should be considering, I mean, this is our decision to make, so we can we can have a discussion right now about what's in front of us. Anything else that the board is concerned about?
Is the drawings that we're looking at now, the drawings that the applicant. Had created in response to. Um the the minutes or in response to a subsequent analysis? Cause the minutes are mu- much less specific and eaching, it sounds like you had a really good conversation. With with design review and that you've been able to translate all the architectural nuances and and asks. Into a request and is are you seeing that fulfilled in these drawings?
Um yeah, I I feel like the conversations were helpful and very productive um and I do think that the. The applicant. Met those requests maybe with with um a further discussion than. Possibilities to meet meet even further, so um no, I think that they did a good job at responding.
So so these drawings are a product. Of eachings conversation with the petitioner, is that a correct way of putting it eaching?
And my understanding of the DRC.
Right, but they they're they're they are not, so.
We need the DRC to weigh in, right?
Well, we we can't, that's a decision for this board. Um do we want to, do we have enough information, has the petitioner? Met enough of the considerations or the 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 DRC has raised a number of points, has the petitioner? Achieved? Has they met sufficiently the concerns that the DRC has raised, do they need to go back to the DRC? Um so that's that's those are the, that's the discussion we're going to have to have tonight is how we wanna handle that. Um I think so. Can we can start working through this list, I have six things here, actually five. Um and so the question I have is are are there anything else that the board is concerned about? That I can put on this list and then we can start talking about them.
Well, my my concern is the timeframe and the professionalism of our town's response to applicants. And I, the process um being dragged out in the conversations that are had. That 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 the weight that's put on to one committee over the another is problematic and so I. I think as I think for the town perhaps from the town's perspective, we want. This this applicant to succeed and to and to upkeep the property and to to contribute to the vibrancy of jam town. I think that is, that is a goal, we want this to go forward, um I think the. Um the consideration of time plus design. And and historic accuracy, I I think those things all sort of move together and. The time element is is key now is is my understanding of this this process is that we we need to figure our way to to move it along.
I think we go through your list and we remember that design has concerns, the builder has realities and just have to find the middle.
Okay, so why don't we um? Why don't we start talking about, so the first on my list is a six over six versus two over two? And so the key thing here is that um the original structure had two over twos on both sides. And if you could go, oh, it's right there, and so what you see is that um. So maybe at this point, um one of the key questions you had eaching was whether these are removable muttons?
Um yes.
And so could we, Mr. Kablock, and I know he's here, I just can't see him at the moment.
His hand raised.
So, Mr. Kablock, can you please, um if you could let us know? Whether those are removable muttons or are they? Go ahead, please, I missed that.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good evening, I wanna thank uh this, I think, God for our time to spend with me. Very quality time, we want all much as detailed possible and I agree. And I believe I complied with all the changes was requested. Specifically with the arch windows and then rest of the windows, two over two. And the railings. The rope railings was only discussed at the board, design board as an example. So you can have a railing, something see through. And we came up with this design, which is see through and plus fits in with a town historical look. We changed the front entrance. We took the columns out, that's gonna match the same as a retail. And the side of side view of the front entrance, as we agree. And I have it in the plan shows three windows showing two over two. And uh bay window, that portion of the lead glass, it's such a poor shape. It's impossible to preserve. I'm gonna preserve that but use it inside of the building, there's no way that. Portion can fit with the new window, it's it's a single glass, it's not insulated, it's such a bad condition. Uh Miss I King, she saw it, it wasn't, it's it's impossible almost to preserve and use it with a new window. But I'm gonna preserve to use it the inside. Here we go, right there, right there, exactly. And uh the windows on the side, six over six, that makes our existing building, which we have. Over fifty windows, six by six and we already purchased those windows. And it's hardly visible from a church priest, the site. But anything is visible, we agreed to change almost eleven wi- windows, twelve windows. To make it two two over two and the arch windows, keep the same shape. Architectural moldings, all the wood trimmings, we're gonna preserve. And keep it as exactly same, nothing will be changed, will be all same wood architectural trimming. Around the frame of the windows. And sightings. Are just about it, just everything.
Uh can I speak, Mr. Mr. Kablock, um so this this was a thought process um after we spoke. But you know, the Anderson windows that you received, uh if they're not um true divided lights. And they are just grills on the outside, they can be popped out and we talked about this, but the front building is a very different style. And the from your existing building in the back and so the the the. Um if we were able to pop out the grills and keep the windows, you purchase the windows and that's fine, but some of these grills can be popped out. If they were just one over ones, I think they would be more, I mean, they're not great, they're not perfect um historic replicate cause. But at least it would be less distracting than the six over sixes if they were just pure one over ones using your exact same windows that you purchased.
I understand, we we tried, uh after I went with you, I went back to lumberyard, which at the warehouse. We opened the boxes, unfortunately, those grids are building attached to the frame of the window.
So they're like like true divided lights.
Well, they're.
The frame is attached, we thought it's movable, we can move them to make it like, you know, maybe four over four or two over two. But they unfortunately, they, the way it's built in manufactured, it's built in with existing window frame.
Okay, and then when we talked about the arched windows in the be- front bay windows, right? Um you see how you're dividing the top, uh we we talked about preserving that top pane as is. And and you and now in these drawings, you have them divided, so what was the?
I have a, I have a sales rep coming in tomorrow morning, but specifically for that question. To try to make sure that only top portion will be not movable without the line.
Right. I think that would be much more preferable.
Correct, that's my, that's my request, that they're gonna send the sales rep tomorrow technician. So they're gonna remeasure the size of the arch. So they, we can order them without the line. Another one.
Would be amazing.
One without that line or the underneath the arch.
That would be fantastic, um as so on the third floor on the mansard roof there, you do have the arch and so is that? Process?
That's existing same way, uh two over two, we're gonna replace them just like that, two over two.
With the full windows extended to to the arch, the the panes would extend to the arch, so there would no not be any division.
Uh you don't like that line like the divided uh top portion of it?
No, 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 um I do like the two over twos, it's 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 that the art, the full, the top pains. Would be extended always, just just like you've drawn it and not like the ones below them.
Correct.
Correct, great. And that would be great.
Correct.
Um, okay, um. So let us, so that I think that answers all, are there any other questions about? The windows and then the board can discuss where, how it feels about the windows.
Well, I think th- th- there's nothing to be done if the six over six have been bought.
Well, we know the board.
Well.
The board could say that it's not, it's not acceptable.
I see.
Can they be exchanged?
Probably.
The correct windows.
It's it's already been paid and there's no way we can, we try to do it, they will not take the, it's a special order. It's paid, they don't even take it back special order. But each one is different size.
So a purist looking at this mansard roofed building. Would say, what are those six over six windows doing there?
On the sides.
What's that?
On the sides, yes, but the applicant is willing to sort of put it on the front, including the three dimensional bay windows.
Right, no, I like the front and um because it's the side of the building and it's a fairly narrow. Alley, right, isn't it a car alley right there?
On both sides, they're fairly narrow, the alleyway on the left side of the building, I think is a little wider, but it's pretty narrow.
So those steps um jut out from the building into that alley, right?
Right, it's very hard to get in there, I mean, I it, you would feel like you're trespassing if you want to peek at the windows.
Right, right, so i- it's it's not a highly impactful thing that the six over six would be installed. It um I can think of so many other things in town that have more of an impact on the look and feel of our downtown. Than these six over six windows on the side of a building on a narrow alley. Am I, am I?
I mean, how were the, how were the windows purchased before? Any of this was discussed, I I mean, is is?
Um well, six, six months and three weeks ago when we filed for a building for me. There was uh building commissioner had no issue about the windows at all and everything was fine. Was accepted.
There were, there were, let let me just say, there were, there were some, um I'd say this process has been full of miscommunications. And um I think that, yeah, so Mr. Kablock is correct, this started in May, perhaps earlier um. There was, there were miscommunications all along, so.
Um I mean, whose whose fault were the miscommunications?
It was everyone's fault, to be honest, we had problems with the handoff from the building department to me. Uh there were miscommunications, misunderstanding, um I think on the petition's part as to what the procedure was and what was required. Um and it was only in the last couple of months, I think, that we uh with. A lot of Taylor's time and expertise managed to come to an understanding and agreement. As to what was required and how to move forward, so um. You know, this was, you know, in part, in large part, the fact that we didn't have a town planner who was there and able to move this process forward. And so we're just, you know, that, that's what happened. Um you know, there were questions that went unanswered um at the same, you know, don't, our building commissioner retired. And there was a, there was a period of time where there was a uncertain handoff of of um responsibilities. Um so. One can point fingers in every possible way on this and you wouldn't be incorrect in pointing, but I don't know that um. I I don't know that there's a way of using that to move forward.
Okay, any, I I would like to hear other people's um. Comments about the windows, the six over six, two or two, one over ones, possible, and then we can move on to the other windows and the other issues.
Yep, um so Nick, you've got the four, do you wanna talk about the your? How you feel about?
Well, I I I I'm, I I've been, you know, we've been talking about this and. Um it, it, it doesn't feel great. That we've been having this discussion. Where all along, there was no intention of ever changing the windows. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't feel great that.
Nick, they, they were just changed though, Nick.
What?
The, the applicant has changed those windows.
They're not changed, they're still six over six.
No, we're talking about the front facade, he is, he had ordered those windows and now they are going to order new windows so that they are correct. Um.
Okay, but what about the side, I, I thought, I thought you said, what do you think about the windows?
Right.
What?
The front windows are included in this discussion.
Right, I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not talking about the front windows, I'm not talking about the front windows, I'm talking about the side windows.
Okay.
I, I, I don't understand what you, what, I don't understand what your point is.
The, you have to concede that the applicant has changed the windows for this.
On windows.
The front.
Okay.
Windows.
So let me, let me just be very clear here, is that, you know. The applicant's concerns about buying new windows is the applicant's concerns. This board can make a decision to say that that is not. A concern that you think rises, that, that the concerns of historic preservation overweight override that. So no one has, no one on this board has made a decision yet as to whether, so it's not a done deal, Nick, as you said. The applicant certainly has an opinion upon whether he wants to buy new windows, that's for sure. But no decision has been made as to whether or not. We're going to go with the six over sixes.
Well, that's how it feels, that's how it feels to me, I, I, I don't see a way out. Unless we make the applicant buy all new windows.
Well, that's, that's.
Uh and, and, and I, I, I don't. I, I mean. Uh. It, it just, I, 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 I just repeat what I said before, is it doesn't feel great to be in this position. Where, where this incredible expense has been made. We're talking about it, we're talking about how it does not. You know, it's the inappropriate style and last time we, we got together, we said, or at least I had said. That we gotta get. The style and the shape of the windows correct, and now I'm sitting here. Looking at the incorrect style of windows. And uh being in a very difficult position.
I think for conversation sake, I would like to just. If we, if I pull up a street view. So we can see. Would that help people? Maybe?
Sure.
I think that would be great.
I would like to see that.
Of course. So we have, you know, street view jumps, you know, five feet at a time. So here's. Um. Here's the view of the building. Forty Church. From in front of thirty eight. We can move a little bit closer and see down the alley. And then when we go to the other side. Here's what the view looks like down the driveway of forty church. And from a little bit further out. So those would be the pedestrian and street view from uh of the sides of the building. Uh just that, you know, for conversation.
So from this side. If that tree were removed, it would be much more visible. And going down towards the common again and looking back at the other side of the building. Maybe come in a little bit if you can. Yeah. And the other thing you can do is in the upper left corner, you can click on the see more dates and it will take you back in time. So two thousand sixteen, two thousand seven.
There's a tree there.
Yeah, look at that. Let me see the two thousand, okay, well, so maybe we have to go to after the tree, um. Was no longer there.
We're seeing it after the tree.
So that, I'm trying to see what these windows look like here.
If you're seeing it at a very oblique view. Um. They look like one over ones even from here, you can't even see the grills.
I almost see two over two. But it's really hard, let me do view options one hundred percent. Yeah, they're two over two.
Right, I know that, but I'm just saying you're, you're, you're seeing it from an oblique view. So it's harder to see the grills.
Oh, yes, absolutely, I mean, that was my point before is that in a narrow alley, it's not as impactful. As, as it, it's really important that he.
So the facade here is what I understand, um the applicant said, is even that, that recessed. Um. Window that faces the front i- is going to be a two over two. So, you know, the, the facade. On the drawing is very flat, but you, the, all, all the windows that sort of surround it are gonna be. Um. Historically accurate.
And I think that's good.
So I just wanna point out that we are really um running out of time. And so we have to make a decision.
What else is on the list, Deav, that you wanted us to go through the drawings?
Well, I think we haven't heard from Carrie on the six over sixes versus two over twos.
I, I. I mean, if we consider, you know, it, if we consider it just as a historic building, the, and take the applicant's sort of burden out of it, the, the. The con- the continuity break of having six over sixes on the front and two over twos on the side. Maybe isn't ideal, but very few people are gonna access that view clearly. So I don't know, you know, we have to bring the applicant back into it, I don't know if their burden is sort of. I think, I think we sort of like got to this whole wormhole because Yeching asked a question about whether. Part of the window was removable, right, can you remind me of the question that started this?
Oh, I, I just wondered if the, the grills were removable and they, they're not.
We have an answer to that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're not.
I mean, that, that might have been.
So for us ever to get back to this where we have six over sixes, the entire window replacement process has to take place again, is that right?
If we want two over twos, yeah. So. Um. So we've, we've heard from everyone on that, do we wanna? Have a poll of how the board feels about this?
Well, one thing, one thing I would say is that this is. One of those junctures where. We have an opportunity to um encourage. Historic preservation and encourage upgrading of housing in the CBD. Um, and. We can certainly ask that the windows be reordered and correct. Um. But it's, it, it, it adds to the concern of making it difficult to get projects built in CBD. And so.
I, I hesitate to go down, I hesitate to. I, I am not, you know, I know that they're much bigger sticklers for historic detail in town, but I, I do hesitate to put too much weight on how much burden we're putting on the homeowner. We have to decide for us as a board whether or not. The change in windows is gonna compromise the integrity of the historic resource to some extent, I, I'm not sold on that point, but I don't, I think. If we start thinking about, you know, we don't wanna become. You know, kind of in the middle of like, you know, a, a. Conference, I feel like right now we're having to sort of solve a marital problem between design review and applicant, and I don't. Want us to feel like we're responsible for negotiating the relationship, that's not our thing, each side brings their own burden for us, we protect the resource. So we feel like this isn't as visible from the street as, as. You know, it would be impactful, but you know, think about the, think about the hoops New England puts their, their business and their homeowners through, you know, we control the paint color and you can't put that. You know, your railing has an inconsistency and, you know, I mean, that's, it's how New England preserves its look, it's extremely picky about small details. So we have to decide if this detail is a compromise to the integrity of the resource and we have to sort of just like. One side's gonna be mad at us, you know, like.
Well, the other thing is that we haven't. We, we haven't.
Yeah, proved it. They finally.
Historical commission, yeah, it was, it was pretty much unanimous.
This was who?
Historical commission.
Yeah, I mean.
On the previous, on even the previous, um.
On the six over sixes, yes. So, so I think, you know, we, we have to navigate. A number of things, so we have to navigate protection of historic resource. Revitalization of the downtown, we do have to worry about the impact of, you know. How we, what, how we are affecting how, um, you know. Sorry, my brain just blanked. I mean, I agree with Sally in some way, and, and it's, at some level that. W- we can't be a burden, that we don't want to be an obstacle to successful redevelopment when the successful redevelopment checks all the boxes. Um I think this is.
Since half the, half the, the communications. Um difficulties over the earlier part of the year.
Right.
Were.
But. But we also have a longer list of things to look at than do design review and historical, so that's our juggling act.
The only thing I would say in addition to what I said before about not minding them on a narrow alley. Is that I do agree with design review that um in this. Drawing, the front railing is quite opaque. And I know, I realize it's a CAD drawing and if you try.
No, 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 Sally, Sally.
No, it's.
We're, we're not doing the railing yet, we're just talking about the windows.
Not with the positive, not the negative spaces.
Can we, can we please, can we?
I did not understand that, Deav, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, let's just, do we want to take a vote on the windows now?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion to accept? The compromise that we see before us? Um, and so what we're going to, the compromise is that. The, we would accept the six over sixes on the sides and the two over twos on the front. With the. Addition that the arched windows cannot have. They must be um full panes from the midpoint of the window all the way up to the top of the arch. So that.
Yes, I would move that motion.
Okay.
Or, or I, I would, I would take that vote, whatever you're trying to do.
Well, somebody's gotta move the motion, so that's the motion.
I make a motion for that.
Okay, so that would be the motion um on the table, is there a second for that motion?
Well, I second it.
Okay, so we have a second now. Um. Robert's rule says that we can now continue talking about this or we could come and go for a vote.
And the reason I seconded it is because I wasn't sure if. Um either Nick or Carrie. Would. So I'm interested to hear what they think.
Okay, so we're going to have more discussion, we're gonna be here a while this evening.
Um, I, I, I'm ready to go for a vote.
Yeah, I don't have much.
I think it, it, at this point, I mean, um. I mean, you know, it, it doesn't feel great, but.
Let's go for the vote then, okay, Sally? Sally?
I.
Okay, thank you.
You just asked me?
Yes, yes.
I didn't very, very well, sorry.
Yeching?
I.
Nick?
Nay.
Uh Carrie?
I'm an I.
Okay, and I'm an I as well, okay. So we have uh four, one. To accept the drawings with the, this revised window configuration, except that the arched windows will be um. They won't have the second dividing line, okay. So we've, the second one on my list was the arched windows, and so we've already dealt with that. Now we're gonna talk about the railing. And so. The. Um point of the DRC was that a railing would, they don't want the railing to, to essentially hide the architectural details behind it. Um, so. There are two thi- so the density of the, of, you know, depending on how you make your railing. Um so the density of the vertical slats has to be a certain pitch in order that you can't, so it has to meet code, right?
Right. So baby's head can't go through it, but um, so what is, if, um, if we could ask the applicant if that's the maximum? Um. You know, space, spacing.
Well, the four inch ball rule is what I always hear, that you have to be able to not.
So it's a minimum height, it's three six, that, that's minimum.
Yeah, and then the four inch ball, you can't be able to put a four inch ball under the railing.
I thought the minimum actually was thirty six. Inches.
No, for the railing?
Yeah.
It's forty two.
Forty two. Alright, so it's a minimum height. Um. And minimum spacing of the, um. The vertical.
Right.
With wood posts and s- steel balusters.
So. In order to. Reduce the physical, the visible. Impact. How small can you make the balusters so that they, they are the ones, that's the biggest impact, right, it's when you see the balusters.
Right.
So.
This is where the cable suggestion came in, and I think it's intriguing. I have seen them deployed both horizontally and vertically. And either way, you still have to comply with the four inch ball rule, I believe, but somebody. Would need to confirm that.
So.
I don't, I don't see what, how the cable, um.
Can, can I, can we make a suggestion on this particular one? Can we, can we c- consider asking the applicant to come back on this one, I don't think it impacts. The progression of this project.
No.
At the moment. So we could ask the applicant to come back with. A cable design and see what that looks like.
I, I, I would just like to say at this point that this design, I agree with the applicant, that this design is more in keeping with the design of the house. A cable design is a sixties. Um, design element. That I think would be out of place.
Okay.
With this.
I think the DRC mentioned that it would be consonant with the storefront below it.
Right, I think, I think that.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I don't know, I, I disagree that that's the way to go, I mean, I, I, the storefront below it is um. I, 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 I don't, I think it, it detracts from the historic structure that we're. Trying to um preserve.
I, I agree with you on that, Nick, I just, I'm just looking at the clock.
And, and, and with the, with, with a vertical railing, you can still see through it and it depends on how thin those. Those uh vertical pieces are. Uh you know, I've seen fences where the vertical pieces are further apart. Um, but I think that the style uh is in more in keeping. With the original structure than with a, a, a sixties cable design.
And you see that Richard Leaf has raised his.
Yeah, Richard might have, uh.
Yeah, I, I just wanna point out that. Uh let me just say, uh Taylor, when do we need to get our budget in by?
The first.
First of December. So. Friday, we need to, we need to have a budget discussion tonight. So, um.
Well, can, can I, can I suggest that we um? Make a motion to approve? I mean, what is it that we need to do to move this along at this point?
Yeah, I mean, can we, can we just, are we at a point where we can go ahead with this, uh where they have enough information to move forward?
I think that we have to make some decisions about the design. Things, I mean, if you approve this drawing as is, and you approve. What the, what the petitioner has said they're going to do in terms of. Um retain the architectural details, if you believe that these drawings are sufficient to that. Purpose. Um. Then you could make a motion to approve everything.
No, I, what I would like to do is pick up a printed set of these drawings from Town Hall next time I can go over there like tomorrow. And study them closely, cuz this, looking at them on the screen, and this is the first time we've seen them. Cuz we never got a printed packet. So I'm gonna, I would like to ask for an extension of time.
So the, I think the major issue that. Is holding up the applicant or the windows. I think, I think we've dealt with that. Um, the railing is something that, you know. I think we can come back to. The um, the question about are the drawings sufficient for? Preservation purposes. Um. I think that's an issue. Um. And so the leaded glass window on the side, I think that's also something which is, I don't believe it's holding anything up at the moment. Uh Mister Kavlakin, you can tell me if I'm wrong on that. But I would, I would ask that we take the rest of the things and we talk about them at a later date. Because if we take, we, we do need to talk budget.
Um, so are you saying that then we would be able to move on from today, or the applicant can move on from today? And start? Something, but we submit the railings at a later date.
I would say that we've approved the windows. The applicant has already managed to pull lots of permits because we approved the addition in the back. And that the rest of the things that are left on this checklist, on this punch list. Are not things which are would hold up continued work on this project.
Right, okay, so uh we're gonna do it piecemeal, but we could, we could approve the front entrance right now.
We could approve that, we could approve the whole thing right now. Someone put out a motion saying they accept everything in front of them right now, we could do that.
Well, there's one thing that's that I didn't know if we had a chance to talk about, but in the. The bulleted list from the design review committee, they said that the very war, they said the wide garage door opening will visually and structurally.
So that was what I was talking about with the bay windows, where they were concerned that the um. How the bay window was gonna be structurally held up, and in these drawings that were resubmitted, they 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 showed a steel beam.
Oh, okay, okay, and that's where the um sort of totally deteriorated stained glass window is being removed.
Yes, and it's very far down into the lot where it's hardly visible.
Right, right. Okay, so that um, so that bullet was addressed um. So on the front of the building. They're moving the entry.
Um, yes, but the the design review had approved the entry except for the design of it. So they didn't want the colonial look and just wanted extended the the hardy plank, and the applicant responded to that by extending the hardy.
Around the door, the entry door.
I I think the hardy plank looks better than what was there before.
Yes, and then with with two over two windows.
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, that takes care of that whole thing, and I haven't had a chance to review the information that Taylor sent over at seven fifteen.
Which was the DRC response?
Yeah, I haven't had a chance to review that.
So so how does the board want to move forward on this tonight?
Can you just tell me if the DRC is happy?
I think Ellen has disagreements with a number of things.
And that is Ellen, they haven't had their meeting.
They haven't had their meeting.
Well, one option is to move um that we. Wait to hear back from them.
Can we just move on the minimal number of things to get the project moving and then uh circle back?
No, I think actually. What D. proposed, fine.
Well, I've proposed, I've proposed two different approaches. I propose that we 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 take up the rest of these smaller details later. Or we approve the whole thing as it is right now, so those are, those are, I think, the only two options in front of us.
I would take the former that we've.
Yeah, I would too.
I. I would make a motion to approve um the application. I feel comfortable enough that they have. Met. The met 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 the requirements in the way that they. They thought was appropriate for them to them.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor to approve this as presented to us. Is there a second? Does someone want to let Richard Leaf say something?
I'd like to hear from Richard and from Alex.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Richard. Briefly, please.
Very briefly, I'm pleased to. A bit of your discussion. I was going to um express my agreement with what Nick said earlier about the railing. I was gonna qualify it, though. Cable railings are very in vogue, are very in fashion right now. For seaside homes, coastal homes on Nantucket, Martha's Vineyard, Rhode Island, the Cape. And they really do not in any way fit with the house that you've been talking about for the last bit, and I would. Sort of strongly try to steer you away from any. Any instructions to the applicant about the railing, I think they should be sticking with the more traditional. Uh, you know, balusters and and railing as as they've depicted on their drawings. That was gonna be my comment.
Yeah, I I go go going with the current fad is not the way I want to go.
Thank you, thank you.
Richard, what would you say about the steel versus the wood um? The balusters.
For the um. Well, uh, you know, what is, has been the tradition for for many, many, many years. There there's been all sorts of. Of materials, mostly composites, that have taken the place in residential decks and. Depending on the manufacturer and how shiny and plasticky they look, they can look pretty good, or they can look a little bit fake. Uh, the metal, um, I I I'm not sure, I'm sure, I'm not sure I'm clear on what they're proposing, but. Metal uh does rust, you know, wood does. The paint fails on it, so it becomes kind of a maintenance issue. So if they're talking about like powder coated aluminum. Then that's gonna really last a long time. I I don't know what what metal has been proposed, but. You know, I usually think of metal as wrought iron. Um, I think of metal for commercial buildings as kind of um. You know, it's aluminum, so I think when I see wood posts and handrails, that to me fits with. The rest of the historic aspect of this.
It does say steel balusters.
Oh, uh, wood posts and handrail, oh, the steel balusters.
Yeah.
Um. I I'm assuming they're doing that for either maintenance or cost or both.
We we, Mr. Kevlacken, could you chime in on why your choice of baluster material?
It wrought iron, wood wood railings. And the spacing, we can go up to four inch apart for code.
So.
Okay.
So to be clear.
Drawings, it looks like they're a lot closer, but we can go up to four inch apart, which will make a huge difference.
So just to be clear, Mr. Kevlacken, you're talking, your your drawing says steel balusters, but you're you're actually saying they're going to be wrought iron.
Wrought iron is a lot more quality. It looks better. We can have a powder coat finish. So.
Okay.
None none shiny, you won't be shiny, we'll be matte.
Okay, so so the drawings, the drawings are incorrect, and they say steel balusters. And you are.
That's a wrong wording, it's not steel, it's a wrought iron, wood wood and railing on the top.
Okay, so we'll make that edit, so.
We'll make it four inch apart.
Yep.
The ball balusters.
And the powder coating.
Correct. If you prefer painting, we'll do painting.
I I understand, and Richard, correct me if I'm wrong, that powder coating coating is a very long lasting treatment for metal.
I I know about powder coating for aluminum, I actually am not, I can't make a, I I can't offer an opinion on the wrought iron, but I would. Say what the um petitioner just mentioned about it being sort of a maddish finish, sounds correct.
Yes.
I I don't know if he's planning on painting the handrail or staining the handrail, that might be another question that you'd ask. But.
It will be wood stain.
Okay.
So that's a very nice look.
A very, very beautiful look will fit historically with the look of the building, and it will look very, very beautiful.
Okay, um, let's, let's, do we wanna, do we now, I mean, we've now gone another fifteen minutes. On the railing, can we vote on the railing?
Is there gonna be any seconds to mine? So I I would continue my motion.
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
With a with a wrought iron balusters and wood posts and handrails.
Okay, so so the motion is to accept this project. Apart from the agreement, what we've already decided on the windows, it would accept this project with the correction that these are wrought iron balusters instead of steel. So that's the motion on the floor.
I second that. I second that.
You second that, okay.
Do we need to, do we need to clarify the spacing, or do we feel like that's covered?
It's covered by, it's covered by um code. Maximum spacing allowed by code, how's that?
Okay, that's great.
And I I think that, you know, to be honest, you don't want to make it any narrower because it costs more money.
Sure, but.
Maximum spacing allowed by code. Okay, so is that an acceptable, so that's a motion to amend? Um, so let's have them vote on the motion to amend. Uh, let's see, Sally.
I.
Eching.
I.
Nick.
Uh, I guess I'll vote nay.
Okay, um, Carrie.
I.
And I vote I as well, so the motion as it stands is. Drawings as appear in front of us, except for the windows which we've dealt with separately, with wrought iron balusters, with a maximum spacing allowed by code. Um, so we have a second, so we are now onto the main motion.
Who seconded it?
Yes, I know, so so we're on to the main motion.
I know, okay.
So we're now gonna vote on the main motion unless we want to have more discussions.
I know, the main motion, I don't think anyone seconded it.
I thought Sally.
Seconded it now.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so Sally seconded it. Um, so now we're back to the main motion, the vote is, we can vote or we can have discussion?
I thought we just voted on the main motion.
No.
I thought that was, I thought that was.
We voted on the motion to amend the main motion.
Which was to change steel to wrought iron.
No, to include the maximum spacing allowed.
Oh, and the maximum spacing, right.
Oh, I see, oh, okay, I I guess that I I I I misunderstood, um, but it it doesn't really matter, I guess.
I I think the motion is, yeah, it would have been five zero or four one, it doesn't have.
So the motion at hand right now is to approve the drawings, right?
With with those.
Modification that we just voted.
That's correct. And it's been made, moved and seconded. I'm sorry, Sally.
I said I seconded that.
Yes, you did, so do we wish to have further discussion, or are we ready for a vote?
I say vote.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Okay, so we're gonna vote on this, um, Sally.
I.
Uh, Eching.
I.
Nick.
Nay.
Um, Carrie.
I.
And I'll vote I as well, okay. So, um, Forty Church Street has gone through design review, and we have approved. As presented to us with those con those, the all of the conditions that have been put on there. Um, Taylor, if you would reach out to the DRC and let them know that they don't have to. That they can, of course, discuss it if they wish, but that we've come to a decision um on Forty Church Street. Um. Mr. Kevlacken, uh. Uh, you have to go ahead to continue then.
Few minutes of your time, I want to thank each one of your member of the board. For all this long process, your patience, your fair fair decision, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, have a good evening.
Good night.
Thank you. Right now, we do have to do something about the budget, so. Taylor. Um, so the key question before us. Is what are the initiatives that we are considering moving forward in fiscal year twenty five? Which would affect our budget? So there's a whole bunch of the standard things, we have periodicals and mark printing and things like that, but. Um, typically, we have thirty five K that we set aside for um.
Twenty five. Four five, four five, forty five.
Right, but to, yeah, but that's that's actually a boost from what we used to ask, we used to ask thirty five. Um, so we bumped it up to forty five, thank you. Um, that's why I'm off, and so that's our standard asker, ask to cover. Projects that come up over the course of the year. And also often um other parts of town government have things that um coincide with with what. Our directives are, and so we chime, we 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 often put in some cash to move things forward. Um, so the big project that we're not going to have, that we've sort of left on the side, was light industrial. And we set aside thirty K for that, so. I think we do want to ask for thirty K for that, because I think we're gonna pick that up again after um. Town meeting.
I agree.
Um, and so. That's, you know, because we're gonna be returning a chunk of money back to the town, because we're not gonna be able to do the project, so we're gonna give back some of the money we haven't used. So we're gonna ask for forty five plus thirty K. And so is there another project that you can consider us taking on? Which would affect our budget?
And the forty five is for what we're discussing right now?
The forty five is our is our now standard level that we put in. And so I would, I would say that we keep the forty five as is, we're gonna ask for thirty K to to do the light industrial.
Right.
And is there another project? That we want to consider, which would affect our budget?
So one project that I would like us to consider is all related to our website and um. And communication strategies. It would be so great if. People could be really informed about the status of all of our projects. Because we had a way to keep our website really up to date, certainly hiring an assistant town planner. Will be a step in that direction, but also finding or just somebody sitting down and really focusing. On how the website can best serve the people who live here.
So that that was, um, so we had put in five K for that. In our last budget, and I don't think we're gonna get to that, so that's certainly a continuation project, so.
And so what, so I don't have any sense of what five thousand dollars gets you in improving a website.
Um. Well, Taylor, Taylor has has suffered the pain of dealing with the website more recently than I have, but there's a limit to how much design work can be done.
We're staying with the same platform, which is Civic Plus.
Yes, um, so so the question is, what would, what would we? What would we ask this person to do if we were to hire them?
So I could imagine hiring a consultant that would take all the information we already have from the communications study committee. About how town residents use websites of um elected and appointed boards. And also just take our own really critical look at it. And ask a consultant to take a critical look at it, know be one who's familiar with Civic Plus. Um, as a platform which has features and opportunities that we may not be using. Um, that would serve our interests as a planning board in making sure that our work is really visible and understood. And questions are answered, and people are supportive. Um, and the website is a great way to do that, and so I could advocate that of that forty five thousand dollars that we consider. Money that we can use to, you know, further our work through consultants and otherwise. Um, that we consider some portion of that for someone who could do that on our website, just come up with the recommendations.
So this would be within the forty five K or in addition to the forty five K?
Well, if we had five K in the budget for this year, and we're turning back some portion of it. That helps, right?
Well, they they, I think, I think we can make an argument that it would help.
Right.
Um, but we we put in extra money last budget for the website, a five K.
Right, and did we spend any of it?
I don't think.
No.
No.
No, we have not.
That's a five thousand, so if we ask for that five thousand dollars for fiscal twenty.
We we can say that this is a project we didn't get to, we still want the money.
Right.
Um, Taylor. Um. What is your, how would you, you're, like I said, you've got the most. Exposure to this website and how it works, um, how would you see us? What sort of consultant do you think we would get, and how how do you see that working?
So there are two types of of issues at hand here. One is. The the usability of Civic Plus, so we're kind of stuck in Civic Plus. Civic Plus is very rigid, you can't do very much with it. It's not a website builder. Um, it's it's a more like a archaic drag and drop, this is what you get. Um, so when we're talking about a consultant, we're not actually. Talking about a consultant that's doing any web development, we're actually, we're talking about a copywriter. That's the, that's the holdup, um, it's 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 the copywriting. Because me going in or an intern or assistant planner going in and. Adding the information to the website, that's not, that's not what's taking the 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 time. Excuse me, it's it's. Excuse me. It's, it's, it's the copywriting. Now, we can certainly decide to say, do we want to invest in something more flexible, something more specific that has our branding, that has something to do with, with planning that we can adapt and change and, you know, have be ours over time. If we want that, then we need a web developer. We need a web, web consultant. That can cost anywhere between ten and fifty thousand dollars. Um, so, so there's, there, there's a difference between copywriting, which is really, if, if we want to hit the ground running now with, with improvements, we're looking for a copyright writer. But if we want improvements over the course of the next six months to a year, that really creates an engagement strategy that we can be proud of, then we're looking for that bigger web, web, web developer.
But, but just to clarify, when you say a web developer, you're talking about a separate platform?
That's correct. Yeah, it would be outside of Civic Plus. We direct people from Civic Plus to our own website. Yep. That's why it's a bigger project.
I don't know if the town allows that. I do know that when you go to the Wright Lock Farm Conservancy um, selection on the government boards and committees dropdown, that it will take you to a landing page on the town website that you click on to go to a conservancy page that's outside of the town website.
That's because they're not really part of the government.
Right, exactly.
But it happens with the Winchester Public Schools website as well.
But they also are a separate entity.
But they're not on Civic Plus, right?
They're not on Civic Plus because they run their own IT infrastructure. So while I, my concern is that once we invest in a new platform, we need to continue to invest in that platform. And that means that we need to have technical support for. It's an ongoing technical support issue.
Let's just pedal way back here and say, copywriter, say more about that person.
So, so the, the, the biggest holdup that we have is getting information onto the site. Right? We have plans. We have a lot of great in, information. I mean, ju- uh, for example, we're, we're kind of in the process of writing FAQs for, for MBTA three A. That type of content is essential to creating a good, a good website with, with detailed in, information about, about everything. Um, so we need someone to go in, uh, to, to take the plans and distill them into digestible, uh, to, to dig- digestible content with imagery and infographs and maybe some videos. Um, but in order to do that, it takes a, a lot of time. Uh, there are people who, who specialize in it.
Can you hire a part-time person to do that?
I, I, if, if you're, if you're looking for my op- opinion on who should be doing it, it's, it's, it's an assistant town planner is, is, is the right person for this. But if we don't have that and we can't get that, then we can find other ways to, to do it like a part-time person.
So I'm a little bit worried about specifically the MBTA three A FAQs, but isn't that what Emily Innes is doing for us too? Isn't she helping us copyright all, all of that?
Yes, so that's, yeah, so that's maybe a poor example for this because that's, that's the use case for MBTA three, three A. But we, we need, we should be doing the exact same thing for all the work that we've done with Light Industrial. And we should be doing the exact same thing that we have with the, um, with the master plan. And we should be continuously updating people on, on master plan in, in implementation. We can even start exploring other things that are kind of, kind of related to planning, like, like street trees. Uh, this, this is all, uh, crucial information that, that, that people need to know, but the content needs to be created in order for, for us to tell people about it.
So, so I think the, you know, so I, I agree, Taylor, that an assistant town planner would be an excellent frontline person to start working on this. Um, what, so the question is, let's, you know, we're going to have an assistant town planner in our budget, so that's just a given. Um, but do we also want to put in the five K? Or however much?
Um, for, for website review?
For, for something like.
Or could it just be marketing? And then it could be, you know, like what we spent on.
It could be, yeah. We could, we could boost. We do have a marketing budget. I think, I don't know if it's called marketing, but.
I think it's called printing or advertising.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's different.
It would be great to increase that budget. That would, that would be
So.
And also a good place to u- use money to get our word out to people.
So, so regardless of what we call this, um, are we agreed that we want to put some amount of, of money in our budget above and beyond our personnel, our contract, our consultant budget? Is five K the right amount? And it doesn't matter what it, what we'll shov- we'll create it somehow. Is five K the right amount?
I don't have any way to answer that. I don't know.
All right, sure. Let's, let's put it down at least five K.
I think for a website budget, five K is probably definitely the low end, but I think an interesting idea is that I know this came up for Conservation Commission a lot. I'm sure the street tree people would love to see their work better represented. So it might be, might be the case that each group kicks some money. I mean, it would be sort of weird to go to like our town site, you know, and you kind of like get a few bits of information from each one, and then you go into the planning board and it's this like beautiful, interactive, reinvented experience, you know, like.
You know.
We kind of want to elevate in synchrony if we can.
And people could question.
But, you know, you lead, you lead by example, so, you know.
I agree, but I think we also progress with collaboration. And if we just ask around, maybe other people kick in a couple thousand.
I'd.
Yeah, I, I think that part of it is how does, how does five K look, uh, as a request to?
I think if it's a communications budget or a advertising budget.
Right, I mean, if we were to put ten K, would, would that be dismissed out of hand because it, because it, it's considered too much? I mean, I don't, I don't really have a great feeling for it other than five K sounds like a reasonable amount to ask for.
For ten K, they would be wanting to see more of a work plan. And for five K, you can say we're going to put together a work plan, but we want.
Right.
So, so I made, let me, let me quickly say, I made the mistake last year of going to the FinCom with a detailed budget, and apparently that's not how it's done. Apparently you go up there and you say, here's what we want. You explain what you're going to do, but you don't do a breakdown. So, so, um, you know, and, and the key is that, you know, I think we can have a, a good argument for what we're going to do. If, if FinCom is going to start drilling down and asking us to explain every single item in our budget, then I think they have to do that with every department out there, and they don't.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I know that part of the reason we ran into issues with FinCom is that I did have a breakdown and, and then they started going over them. I think at a level which was, in my opinion, inappropriate for the size of our budget and for what it was. So, um.
I think five thousand to check out the website is a great idea.
Yeah, and again, it's, it's, it's copywriting, so there's, there's no develop, there's no software development, so, um, hopefully that will keep the costs down.
And I have ideas on how we can get copyrighting, I, um.
Yeah. Okay, so we've got, we've got website development. Is there another project that we want to talk about?
Yeah, I don't want to jinx it, but, um, you know, we're presenting a huge zoning change for spring. Um, should MBTA three A not pass or the Main Street stuff have kinks in it? We will need money to continue it. Um, it's due December, so if, if there is sort of a zoning budget, consultant budget to continue out the work. In addition, I feel like with, with some of these talks, people are getting into this groove of like, oh, wait, why can't we have, you know, multifamily here or there, or, uh, why can't we rethink, you know, whatever? So I wonder if there is just a zoning consultant budget.
Well, it seems like a prudent way to go is to, you know, anticipate that we're going to have ongoing desires to make uh, large-scale plans regarding zoning. Um, and, and, yeah, and we don't know what's going to happen.
So the, the uncertainty there, I think, is how much of this would fall under our existing contract with town council. Because they are the ones who would be, you know, they were chosen in part because of their land use expertise, and so we do have.
Because, I mean, we could, we could just.
What, what do you mean? Um, do you have, so like if it doesn't pass, so state with the stuff that don't pass, why wouldn't we continue on just to refra- to, to, to rethink how we go about this?
Sorry, I was, I was addressing, I think, more of what Nick was alluding to in terms of these longer-term plans in terms of redoing zoning. I think if we come to town meeting and three A fails, um, I think at that point, we would, you know, we would have, we can go to FinCom and say, here's an unintended, here's an unexpected expense. Here's what we're going to need in order to cover it. What we put in the budget has to be, I think, um, I know what you, I, I don't, you know, we would be asking for another thirty K. I think.
Yeah. So I just don't, I just, our huge reliance on consultants this year to get these big zoning things changed. I just can't see us operating like, like a clear cutoff at town meeting. All things are successful. There, there will be continued questions about how to refine these things. And I just can't imagine that we would be able to do that without more consulting.
I agree with you, Yicheng.
Um, well, if it's, okay, so if it does pass at town meeting, then we don't need any further consultant fees for three A, MBT three A, right? The zoning's done, it's cut and dried, it's put in the book. As long as the state approves our plan. That's a, that is, that is a hurdle that we can't, that we cannot foresee, although we should be okay.
Um, Spring Town Meeting is in April and, no, if it, if yes.
Our budget's in early May. Yeah, because we can't do a vote on budget until May first.
So can it be worked out with the moderator? I mean, we sort of saw that this year at town meeting that if this didn't pass, then we would go to this, this next motion.
So we could put in a special motion to ask for further funding in case the three A did not pass.
Because we really need the funding because it has to pass.
Right, so if that is, so I think there's a difference between putting it in our standing budget and putting it in as a.
Request.
Emergency request, now.
Yeah.
Um.
Okay.
I, I, I don't know. Uh, Yicheng, I, I understand what you're, what you're, which I, I completely agree that we will need resources. I don't know what the best way of getting those resources is. If we put it in our budget, so we're going to be asking for, you know, another thirty K. And that I think we do have to explain and say, we put it in there as a contingency. And what FinCom will say is what they said in the spring, that if this is something that happens that you did not expect to happen, then you should come to FinCom and ask for the money.
If it does pass, what are, do we have any expenses that we're not thinking about?
Um, I think the one thing that may happen is that if it passes and somehow the state finds that we are somehow not compliant for some technical reason, who knows, some calculation was off, then we will have to, um, redo that. We will have to bring it into compliance and come back to town meeting to vote it.
Well, and the other thing is that when, if, if it passes at town meeting, it goes to our zoning bylaw host. And it can take a long time for those changes to get actually posted.
But.
But it wouldn't cost us money.
That wouldn't cost us money, no. But what might be necessary is that if it passes, that we have just a few simple handouts that people can pick up and say, what are these overlay districts? What does it mean? Like a, a quick reference while we're waiting for the zoning to be updated online. And also you can pass out the vote, the warrant.
I, I presume that we would have those prior to the vote, if only so that town meeting would have an idea of what we're talking about.
Right.
So, once, once, once town meeting passes it, it essentially becomes operative from the moment, it's actually from the moment it's put in the warrant. Um, and then it's, it goes, it's, it's a weird rule. Zoning, you have to, you have to pretend that the zoning isn't is effective from the moment it goes into the warrant. If it fails at town meeting, then you don't, then you can forget that. If it doesn't fail at town meeting, you still pretend that until the AG comes down and says it's okay.
Or is it to, to post, to, to like?
So it's, it's all pretty much, yeah, I mean, the AG rarely says it's not okay unless we did something really stupid.
Yeah. Well, so that's great.
So, so the question of what do we need, Carrie's question of what sort of resources we need? I think the, the worst, if town meeting rejects it, then we need a lot more resources. If town meeting approves it, we may need some resources if it turns out there's some technical bit that we're not compliant with because they do the calculation differently or something.
Which is what Yicheng suggested.
So I, I agree that we, that should, those should be FinCom asks, and we shouldn't put in our own defeat. We'll just regret it later.
How does the rest of the board? Yeah, I mean.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm also thinking not just the three A, but also the Main Street. Um, I, with the, with our last, um, public meeting, I feel like it was like, you know, like a little bit you poking at the hornet's nest a little bit. People are like, oh, hey, wait, you know, this, this, these things are possible and the discussions are happening and, um, so of even for the three A thing, I'm thi- I'm hoping the MBTA three A passes and that we're, we're done with that. But the, 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 the North Main part where um, I can see, you know, delays or, or amendments and things that are sort of get, because it's not mandated, that people will be, be, you know, of delaying it or, or, so I, I, I mean, I'm hoping with Carrie too, that I, that we don't plan for a defeat there.
No, it's a good point though. Even if it, like the time that we would have where they sort of parse the details and, and we're sort of waiting, we should be working on North Main at least. Because some of that's outside of the three A region anyway, so. So if we think of it that way, sort of like, let's see if we can set funds aside for North Main, and then if we need them for three A, we shift them.
Hmm.
So, I mean, we are planning and bringing both. I think it's, it's.
It's ambitious.
It, well, yes, but, um, so the question then is, if we have to do more three A, more Main Street work to go to fall, let's say that they put, for some reason, Main Street goes on indefinite postponement, which is what it'll be. Um, and we bring it back in the fall. So we've got forty-five K in our standard consultant fees. I can't imagine that redoing, that moving from spring to fall is going to take another thirty K.
No, no, it won't.
So we could say that we take fifteen K out of our forty-five K and use that for North Main Street cleanup if we need to. And that still leaves us with thirty K for other. I think it's just really weird to say, I mean, if I think about projects which have not made it through town meeting, it's, it's not like there's a, they put in contingencies in case town meeting doesn't approve it. They try to get the money from elsewhere.
That's right.
And, and there's not an exact map, but for instance, the, um, a town, last town meeting, they didn't approve, um, engineering design on a culvert.
Yeah, the one on Everett Ave.
Yeah, and then the select board took it out of somewhere else this past Monday. So it's not an exact mapping, but the idea is that there was money from elsewhere. For us, padding our budget in order, and I don't mean that in a bad sense, in order to put in a, a possibility that town meeting rejects what we do, is sort of saying, well, if town meeting tells us they don't like this, do we start from scratch or do we try to sell it to them again, right? Are we reading the will of town meeting when they, if they say, this is a horrible idea, we don't want you to do it, then we should drop it.
Are you talking about North Maine?
I'm talking about North Maine. I'm talking about, how does this board handle? I mean, I think it's important. I don't want to drop it. Maybe if town meeting says, we don't like this part of it, we can work on it. Um. Do we put, but it's, it's another question of, do we write something in our budget? I mean, I think it's something, I don't know.
I, I think it was, if we say that the North Main Street rezoning passes at Springtown meeting. Um, retroactive to the warrant, that's great because then updated zoning bylaws are available. And all the people who are really interested in economic development in the northern extent of Main Street. Um, will have clear guidance and it will take anywhere between. Five and twenty years to roll out and be revealed. And that's great. I don't know what that impact has on our budget. Um, if it succeeds, but I'm totally agreeing with Carrie that. I don't think you should budget to cover the expense of failure. It just doesn't feel. Strategic.
But, uh, because we have the FinCom's option, I mean, it's not.
That's right.
It's not sort of aspiration. I'm not putting a hoax on like. You know, if we sort of script it, we will fail, but.
And, and you know.
There's a mechanism in place for it. So let's, let's not sort of go there saying, eh, it's not gonna work out.
And there is a mechanism in place also for having things go well at town meeting and it's an.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, you know, I think we have a strong argument of three A doesn't pass. Go to FinCom and say, we need more money, cause we have to do that by the end of the year. I think if we go to FinCom and, you know, if, if, if North Maine doesn't pass and we go to FinCom, they're gonna say. You know, this is not a, a, a do or die situation. And so they may say that, well, we understand you wish to continue. You know, this is not an emergency situation. Maybe you should consider coming back to town meeting with another budget request.
Well, let's also remember that the town has, is in the process of hiring an economic development consultant or director.
Consultant.
Consultant. And that. Work is relevant to building the case for the revitalization of the northern end of Main Street.
Yeah, but that's, I don't know that we're gonna get someone. By the spring.
Right, right.
So, so, uh, uh, can I get a sense of the board? Um, just, do we wanna, do we wanna put in an extra fifteen K in case North Main Street doesn't pan out the way we hope? Or do we wanna go into our, our forty five K of consultant fees and take what we have, what we need from there?
I vote for the latter.
Yeah, I guess I'm kind of getting swayed. I, I, you know, not, uh, planning for failure, I suppose.
I think forty five K.
Okay.
Things.
So, so we're still, so we're gonna. So it sounds like our budget is still, it's, um. Whatever we have, everything will be the same except for, we're asking for forty five K. I think that we're gonna ask, no, our standard consultant will be forty five K. We're gonna ask for an extra thirty K for light industrial. Um, five K for some side of web, some sort of web stuff, our website, copywriting. Um, we're gonna ask for an assistant town planner. And that is it.
Yep.
Okay. Taylor, does that give you enough information to fill out all the little things you need to fill out?
Yes. The only, the only thing that, uh. The only additional piece of information is what rollover? Or whatever the term is that, that we use.
Turn it back. Turn it back.
Thank you. Um, do, do we have?
We don't have any rollover.
That's good. We used it all.
No.
So the, so the existing five K that we have for. Uh, website. Are we gonna use that before?
We can, we can, if, if we want to use it before July, we can. If we can.
I think we should.
We should. Okay. So let's, so let's, let's put the five, let's use the five K. Um, yeah, I mean, we have money to spend on these issues. It's just, we've been so focused on. A few big things that we haven't, like, we still haven't printed our banner yet, right? Um, we still have to finish off as part of the contract of, with, um, got your nose for the, for the maps.
And let's remember that town day comes around very quickly, which is.
Yeah. So if we want to do the copywriting, um, this is also something, oh. Taylor, we, we need to get an update on Northeastern.
Yeah, yeah. Do you want it now?
I don't know if we need it now.
No, we don't need it now.
Okay.
Yeah, let's, but, but, but the Northeastern could help us with the copywriting as well.
Uh, that's, that's correct.
Okay. So I think we're good on, we don't have to, we're, we're only talking about what we're gonna present in the budget. To town meeting in the spring. We still have many conversations about how we spend what's in our current budget.
That's correct.
And the only thing I want to caution is that we did promise we would do the light industrial. We aren't going to do it. So let's be careful to retain that money and give it back to the town unless we have a really important. Thing. Cause I think that, that was a promise we made. And so I think we should be careful with the monies. So that's this, but other than that, I think we're done this evening, right?
I think so.
So a, um.
We did not do the ledge's letter of intent, so that we'll have to go to the meeting on the twelfth.
Yep. We're, we're, we're gonna go all to go to bed now, I hope.
Yes, good. I'd like to move to close the meeting.
Uh, one move, is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Uh, all in favor? Nick?
Hi.
Eching.
Hi.
Sally.
Hi.
Carrie.
Hi.
I say I as well. Uh, okay. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to, um.
Hi, Richard. Bye Nancy.
Bye, Richard Lee. He's our liaison with the Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Nancy Pocari, our recording secretary. Thank you, Taylor Herman. Thanks to all the other board members. Thanks to everyone out in TV land for sticking with us. Thank you, Winken, for recording us. And we will see you all again in two weeks. Bye.
Good night.